Good morning. Uh, thank you all for being here. We appreciate the interest in what's going on in Commissioner's Court today. Tyner's gonna be giving the invocation in just a few moments. Then we'll do the pledge, the U.S. and Texas flag. We'll move through the consent agenda as quickly as the court allows and move into the interviews for the position of sheriff. Sheriff is here. He's announced that he is retiring at the end of, uh, November?
October.
October. Trying to give you another thirty days. Okay, you want October. Okay. At the end of October, so we will be interviewing five candidates this morning that were selected from the thirty candidates that we received. And then the court today will vote on the replacement for the sheriff to fill out the unexpired term. So that's the plan. We're glad you're here. And Tyner, are you prepared? All right, please rise.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, today, we ask that you give this court wisdom to govern in the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Give us a sense of the welfare and true needs of the people of our community. Give us a sense of justice and righteousness. Give us confidence in what we do. We pray for the ability to work together in harmony, and even when there's honest disagreement. Give us personal peace in our lives. We pray for the agenda set before the court today. Be with the court as we start the process to select an important position of sheriff. In your name we pray. Amen.
You have been pledged to the U.S. flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored with the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Tyner. Okay. Today's October the seventeenth. We're meeting in the Nuasis County Commissioners' courtroom. I'd like to certify that all members of the court are present, that we started at 9:00 a.m., and that we have a quorum.
Ten.
Tyner, what do we got?
You know, approve the minutes, Judge.
Probably a good idea. We do that every time we meet, don't we? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
No, moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Thank you. Okay, Tyner.
And Judge, we have some folks here for National Disability Employment Awareness Month.
Great.
And they have an interpreter.
Please, come up. We'd love to see you all. See you all.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we're pleased to be here today. I'd like to bring my colleagues and folks up, if you'll come up to the well, because we're gonna get a picture with you guys.
All right.
Okay.
Five dollars.
It's an important time. We're here to thank you for helping us raise awareness of the value and importance of inclusion in the workplace, the message of the 2018 National Disability Employment Awareness Month campaign. I'm Linda Falwell-Stover, Director for Coast to Bay and Center for Independent Living. Our nonprofit organization has a mission to assist people with disabilities to achieve their goals. We're here today, along with colleagues, board member, I believe Lamont is on his way in, Lamont Taylor, and community partners, including Accessible Housing Resources, Inc. Our interpreter here today is Tony Padilla. Why are we here? Because employment and all that brings, empowerment, monetary independence, self-determination, is a goal for many people with disabilities and a struggle. The United States Department of Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics reports in an economic news release dated June of 2018 that eighteen point seven percent of people with disabilities were employed. In contrast to the employment ratio for people without disabilities was sixty-five point seven percent. Folks, we have some challenges. In spite of the increased focus on education for people with disabilities, unemployment rates for persons with a disability were higher than for persons without a disability. That unemployment rate for persons with a disability was nine point two percent in twenty seventeen, for people without disability at four point two percent. What can we do? How do we deliver on the 2018 N-D-M message? America's workforce, empowering all. We can all take active steps to consider and hire qualified persons with disability in the workplace. Plan for it all year, not just in October, folks. Please, let's all work together to increase opportunity for people with disabilities to enter the workforce, embracing inclusion, empowering all. Thank you so much.
I'll read the resolution, Judge.
All right, thank you, please.
Whereas workplaces welcoming of the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. Whereas in this spirit, Nuasis County is recognizing National Disability Employment Awareness Month this October to raise awareness about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of people with disabilities. Whereas activities during this month will reinforce the value and talent people with disabilities add to our workplaces and communities and affirm Nuasis County's commitment to an inclusive community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County hereby proclaims October 2018 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in Nuasis County. And in doing so, the court calls upon employers, schools, other community organizations in Nuasis County to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities and to advance this year's theme, America's Workforce, Empowering All.
Is there a motion?
No, moved.
Uh, count a second? Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Ladies, do you want to come up here and we'll get a picture?
That would be great, thank you.
I think that'd be good. Um...
As you do that, Judge, I'll describe what everybody's holding, which is the artwork that is selected by the Governor's Committee on People with Disabilities. The artist this year is by Ashley Sattler. This is a picture of Ashley. Ashley has autism, and I'd like to read what she wrote about her artwork. "I have autism. It comes with struggles that I face every single day. Sometimes even simple tasks can become extremely overwhelming, but I hope this will not stop me from finding a place in the workforce. Inclusion does matter, especially for people like me. I do not let my disability stop me from pursuing what I love most, creating art. It is not just my passion, it is my life. I hope to encourage others to pursue their creative abilities as a method of expression and even perhaps as a livelihood." And I'll get a photo, Judge.
Can you get a photo, please? Okay. One, two, three. One, two, three. Good one. Before you all leave, we have a special department here in the county that we employ persons with certain disabilities on the way that they can approach the workforce and the workplace. And we've been doing that for years. And it comes under the IT department, and Lance is in the back. And these people who make a contribution to what we do do an outstanding job. What do we have, Lance? Eight, six, eight? Eight people in the department now? Six. And we challenge them to do job, and they do a wonderful job. And so the county has been participating in something like this for years. We want to continue that. And this lady that you just heard from says she has autism. Our daughter has triplets that are sixteen. The two boys have Asperger's. So we know how we have to live with challenges. One of them does well, one of them doesn't do so well. But it's a challenge that she has and our family has and everyone else has. So we're, I am particularly impressed with what you all do and the challenge that people who hire people like this, and by the way, these two boys are really smart. They just don't get along with people well. But they are extremely brilliant. One of them does all of his math in his head, and he gets accused of cheating every time he changes teachers, but that's just the way things are. But we appreciate what you do, ladies. And thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank God, yes.
Oh, God, yes. Thank you, Joe. Thanks, Tyner. Public comment? Public comment is reserved for those things that are not on the agenda. Any items here are public comment for items not posted on the agenda. Do we have any? Okay. Debbie Lindsey Opel, please. Good morning, Debbie.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, I have to say I really like the way that you invite your guests up to share with your entire Commissioners' Court the presentation. And it's always fun to see how our public leaders exert that leadership. Good morning to you and Commissioners. Thank you for your service, and thank you for the consideration of my interest in serving on the Nuasis County Hospital District Board. I'm a little frustrated with the absence of communication, not just on this issue, but I'll tell you, throughout our whole community. You know, Mr. Chesney expressed concern for me at your last meeting. However, Commissioner Vaughn and Commissioner Modest, thank you for reaching out. You know, true leadership means walk and talk. Over the past eighteen months, I've come to learn what you, Judge Neal, have been battling for many years. It is hard to get people to step up and do the heavy lifting when you're trying to build a strong community. And Judge Gonzalez, while, I mean Judge Jag and Commissioner Gonzalez, while we may fan their flames for public service and education at a young age, when someone steps up and finds the playing field unbalanced by last-minute legal maneuvers and special interests, many find it just not worth the effort. If this area is to grow, things must change. You know, if that effort last meeting was to protect me or to somehow guard me, perhaps someone would have picked up the phone and talked to me about it rather than have it just appear in front of the court. You know, today, I'm a little bit better versed in the very real male-dominated politics that operate in the dark corners of our community. This experience reinforces what the community believes. It's really not what you know or what you have to offer, it's who you know. And unless those in position of influence step up to demonstrate true leadership and not the politics of friendship and special interests, people will still be asking, why can't Corpus Christi in Nuasis County grow years from now? Ms. Vaughn, I had someone challenge me recently on my interest in paying special attention to how many women are in positions of service and leadership. So we have to ask ourselves, why do we not have more women willing to step up? In the end, we need many more good people, men and women, young and seasoned, to help us lead into the future. When you have kind of a questionable concern for someone who's trying to do that very thing, perhaps it frustrates others. The good news for me, though, and the reason I came today, is in the intervening couple of weeks, there's been an opportunity to compete for some consulting work with a medical entity that might intersect with the hospital district and their work. So therefore, it could potentially create a real or perceived conflict of interest. And therefore, I am respectfully requesting that my name be withdrawn from consideration for this board. And Mr. Chesney is the Chair of my leadership, Corpus Christi Class 22. I'm a little disappointed that I haven't heard from you. Thank you.
Ms. Opel, did you contact my office to let me know that you were interested in this position?
Can't talk.
Okay. In public comment? My public comment is, I don't have a tendency to call everybody who applies for boards, but I'm always willing to talk to anyone who reaches out to listen and to talk. And for the record, Ms. Opel has never contacted my office. I do believe she's contacted other Commissioners to talk to them and didn't ever contact me to ask. Other applicants have reached out to me, and I have met with them when they reached out to me. So if, that kind of goes both ways, and that's my response to that.
Any other public comment?
Judge, I didn't know we could talk at public comment.
I'm making public comment.
So I'm making public comment.
Sure.
Debbie, I appreciate what you said.
No, no, wait. You can't address her, so I was just making public comment online.
Can I talk, Judge, now?
Just wanted to make sure.
I appreciate the fact that she came up, and what she said is so true. And we've got to change that in this city. And I don't think that you always, I think that it's up to us sometimes to contact the ones that are running, unless we've already got our mind made up. And I actually talked to both candidates. And I appreciate her coming forward and saying what she did, because we've got to move forward in this city where we're not only putting men on boards, but women, not just on library boards for women or animal control, but women's boards that have high position and high profile, because they can make just as good a decisions as men. So I appreciate her coming today. Thank you. And I'm sorry that she's not gonna keep her name in there.
Any other public comment? Consent agenda items are items that will be voted on by one vote, unless, remember, the court, remember, public asked that item be pulled and individually voted on. Under 3A through 3CC, other consent agenda items, do I have any public comment? Under 3A through 3CC, public comment on consent agenda items. The item E, pull, Judge? Just one moment. See no public comment? Commissioners? Yes. Okay. E?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that John?
Judge, I'd like to table item G.
Table G. Make the motion.
Motion to table item G, bring it back next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Y?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We've tabled that item to the next meeting. Any other items on the consent agenda? We wanted to pull E.
I did, Your Honor.
Okay, go ahead.
Just a little bit of clarification. We added a couple of positions on here that aren't under the subject of the freeze, which is our two department heads for grant administration and emergency manager coordinator. They just recently submitted their notice of resignation, so we wanted to make those items to be subject to media applications for the HR department. And we have just been recently told that our purchasing agent has withdrawn her letter of resignation, so I would like to remove the purchasing agent from the unfreezed list.
All right. So we only have two department heads we're going to be dealing with.
That's true, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Move approval of that recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. For the balance of the consent agenda items, number 3A through 3CC, with the exception of E and G, I have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign.
I have a, I just have one question, Judge. On K, I'm sorry. On K?
K, all right. What about K?
When we get this notice here on the hangers, is there any way we can include the rental that comes along with the hangers? So we'll know what the rental is all, what kind of rentals, what kind of rent we have on them?
You're talking about the rate?
Right.
Yes, it should be defined in the agreement.
Let me see it.
I can look into that for you, though, and get those for you.
Let me see what you can find. Okay, please.
Yes, I'll do that for you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So we are, I called for the vote. 3A through CCC, with the exception of E and G, and we had a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign. We'll go to G. We've tabled E. We've discussed, right? So I can move on. That's it? Okay. Thank you all very much. At this time, we're going to enter into the interview process for filling the vacancy of sheriff to be, the sheriff is retiring, as we know. We have five applicants that have been cleared to us by all of the Commissioners as well as HR. We're going to do this in open session. Each one of the applicants will have an opportunity to discuss themselves and their desires with the court. And the Commissioners may ask questions of any of the applicants as they come forward. At the end of the interview process, I think we're scheduled to go into executive session. We're not? We're going to do it right here in front of God and everybody. Okay. After we do the interviews, we will ask, I will ask for recommendations from the court on who they would like to select as the person to fill the unexpired term of Sheriff Kalin, and we'll vote on that right here for everybody. So today, we're going to have full transparency. Commissioners, feel free to ask those questions that you would like to ask. And the first applicant that we have on the list...
Judge, can I ask?
Certainly.
I wanted to make a motion that we interview these one at a time with the other four not in the room and not present, so that everyone can have fresh answers. So I would like to move that we put all of the, I would like to move we do it in alphabetical order, or however you randomly choose, and then put the other four in the judge's conference room and ask that they not listen to the answers given by the ones in front and behind them.
Commissioners, I want to do that. And the county attorney told me that this is an open meeting and that we can ask them to leave, but we cannot make them leave.
Okay. That's my motion to ask them, to ask the four that aren't in the, being interviewed to leave, and...
Is there a second to the motion?
I don't know how we do this, quite frankly, county attorney.
Well, we're just voting to ask, and if they don't want to, they don't have to, I guess, according to the...
It's not gonna be fair, some stay and some don't.
Well...
We have a motion and a second to ask all of the candidates to accompany Tyner to my conference room next door, and we'll call on you individually. If you choose not to, that's your choice. We have a motion, a second, all in favor? Huh? They're all okay? Would you take them next door, please?
Are you okay?
H?
H, yes.
John Hooper.
And it doesn't have to be alphabetical, I just thought that would be the most random, so whatever's easy.
Yeah. Well, we have the order before us, and we can do it in alphabetical order. Tyner's gonna take them next door as soon as Tyner returns, or somebody. Could you bring in, please, Mr. Hooper, who will be the first candidate? If you think this is a little awkward this morning, you're probably right. But we're gonna get through it, and we'll do the best we can to be fair. And I think that was a good suggestion, and I appreciate their volunteering to go ahead and move out. Got him coming?
Yes, HR's getting your candidate.
Okay, good. Thank you. Chris? Would you come to the microphone, please? Good morning. Thank you for your interest. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Chris Hooper, John C. Hooper. And Chris, would you go ahead and talk to the court, tell us about yourself, and anything that you would like for us to know other than your resume, which was complete? And then we'll open this up to questions by the court. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Judge. My name is John C. Hooper. I'm currently employed by the City of Corpus Christi Police Department. I'm the Public Information Officer. I'm a lieutenant. I'm a first-line supervisor. I've been a supervisor over there for ten years. I've been with the department for thirty-five years. Before that, first of all, my wife Cheryl's in the room, and we have two children. We have a fifteen-year-old and a thirteen-year-old that go to Flower Bluff. Cheryl's a retired flight attendant, and she currently is a bookkeeper for about five different churches here in Corpus Christi. She helped me go over our budget, or the sheriff's department budget. Prior to the Corpus Christi Police Department, I worked for the Port Aransas Police Department for about a year, and I still have many friends and contacts out in Port Aransas. Prior to that, I worked for Solomon P. Ortiz. I was a jailer for about eight months. And from what I understand, that's still pretty much the average tenure of a new jailer here in Nuasis County, and that's on my to-do list to change that. I worked for, I have worked for eight different police chiefs, and I've learned an awful lot about leadership from eight different police chiefs. I've learned what to do right and what to do wrong. And that's something I will bring to my role in the sheriff's office. You can learn, it's, in my opinion, it's much better to learn from someone else's mistakes and not make them yourself. Very little has been done, just about everything has already been done in law enforcement. If we haven't done it ourselves, someone else has. And it's extremely important that we learn from that. I feel I'm pretty well-connected. I spent ten years in training, and I have contacts and networking all over the state. I have friends in other departments in different positions. And in my assignments with the Corpus Christi Police Department, I've frequently reached out to administrators in other cities and even in other states in efforts of solving a problem that was confronting us at CCPD that maybe we haven't handled before, but somebody else has. So I think that's what I bring to the table. Thirty-seven years of public service, I look at it as a vocation, not a job or a career. And being sheriff of Nuasis County would be a continuation to that, and I look forward to doing it.
Thank you very much. Questions? Commissioners?
Ladies first, no?
Oh, y'all love it when I get to go first. That's okay. I'm okay. Okay, so you've had quite a bit, you had eight months of experience in the jail.
Eight beautiful months.
Eight beautiful months.
I remember them like they were yesterday.
I've been over there. I don't get that. Can you tell me, in your opinion, what are the two, number two problems facing the Nuasis County Jail right now?
One of them is, I already touched on it, it's eight months. It's eight months. If that's the average tenure of our correctional officers, we can do better. And the problem, number one problem, is hiring, attracting, recruiting, and hiring the best possible eighteen-year-olds that we can, because they only have to be eighteen. Hiring those employees, getting them trained up, and then retaining them. And I have some innovative ideas on how to do that. And we, that's probably another question. The number-two problem facing the jail, everybody knows, is overcrowding. Jail overcrowding is a problem. And it was a problem in nineteen eighty-one when I worked there. I think the bed count was eight hundred, no, four hundred, four hundred or five hundred and eighty-one. And every day, we were at three eighty, three ninety. It's something that Sheriff Ortiz was dealing with in nineteen eighty-one. And I understand there's some solutions on the horizon, right? With a hundred and forty-four new beds coming online? But unless we change something deeper, unless we change something in the pipeline, those hundred and forty-four beds, two, four years from now, we're going to be still talking about jail overcrowding. And I'm, I am aware of a travette, nineteen ninety-two federal court decision that mandates the sheriff to take action when a certain trigger point is reached, like ninety-five percent of capacity. So the sheriff's one of the only sheriffs in the whole state that has a court order to do certain things when we get to ninety-five percent, and that's not going to change. So the two, those two are what I would present.
Okay, can you give me an idea what you would do to retain employees? Because that is a big issue.
It's all about, well, let's start with recruiting. At the police department, I was in charge of the social media sites, the social media platforms. And I took them from twenty, my office, my two, me and my two assistants, took those social media platforms from twenty to over forty thousand. We have more followers on some of our social media platforms than member, than the news stations or local media outlets. I mean, we do well. We get the message out there. And a big part of that is promoting the brand. We promote the brand of the department I work for now, where it's a, it's a very attractive brand. And people, that has so aided us in our recruiting. And the same thing can be done with a sheriff, with a sheriff's office. Using social media, using our partners in the media, and staying engaged as the voice and the face of the department, you upgrade the brand. Not to say that it's hurting now, because it's doing well, but we can do better. You upgrade the brand, you make the brand more attractive, people want to come to work here. Attractive place to come to work for a variety of reasons. And so you get them, you hire a better quality of applicant to begin with, because you have maybe a bigger pool of applicants to select from because of the upgrade in the brand. And then you go from there.
Okay, one other, and I'll let someone ask questions. Sheriff has been criticized at times for supporting, I believe it's called 287G. Would you support that and enforce it?
Protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and impartially enforce all of the laws, federal and local laws. That's the oath of office. Laws are the laws. There's a place to change laws, but that's Austin...
Okay, one other, and I'll let someone ask questions. Sheriff has been criticized at times for supporting, I believe it's called 287G. Would you support that and enforce it?
Protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and impartially enforce all of the laws, federal and local laws. That's the oath of office. Laws are the laws. There's a place to change laws, but that's Austin and Washington. The sheriff or a head of a department shouldn't be picking and choosing, or any police officer, sworn police officer who took that oath of office, shouldn't be picking and choosing which laws they enforce. Now, 287G has a significant place inside the jail by those two trained-up deputies, and their access to the database, and their ability to work on the detainers, right? But when it comes to out in the field, as far as I know, and I can speak as a patrol supervisor and a patrolman in Corpus Christi, we never arrested for immigration violation, never. Have we asked about immigration status? Yes, when it pertains to a certain crime, right? And when you talk about identifying or working with immigration and customs, right, cooperating with a federal agency, that is so important. If we didn't learn anything else after September the 11th, 2001, we should have learned that lack of communication between law enforcement agencies was one of our biggest failures at that time. Local departments, county departments, state departments, and federal departments need to communicate, and they need to work together.
I appreciate and support that answer. Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions, please?
I'll go.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
So you've given us some ideas of, you know, your experience that you have with CCPD, some of the things that you've done, or reviewed your resume, a lot of, a lot of education, a lot of training there. What kind of training or additional support would you like to see given to your jailers or your deputies that are out there, out in the field, out, out of patrol? What, do you think that there's anything that's lacking right now in that department as far as training or support for them?
You can never get too much. I spent 10 years in training, and every year, it evolved. There was always something else. And there was, a lot of it was mandated by the state. And there is so much mandated material that it limits the amount of creativity and improv that a department can do. But that being said, you should never close your eyes to more training. And a lot of it in law enforcement, sadly enough, is reactionary. And so what I would do is I would look back on the history of this office and see if there's anything recently that throws up a red flag that we need to address. Having a vision of the big picture in an agency, to see where it's going, where it's been, where it's going, what the trends are. And a lot of the trends that affect us in law enforcement, they come from the internet, they come from other cities. I mean, information exchange is just unbelievably fast. So when, if you got your eyes on the ball, you're seeing the big picture, you see something that's going, Barra County has had 21 correctional officers arrested this year, 21. They got a problem in Barra County with either hiring, or retaining, or supervising their people. And so you look at Barra County, and you can learn from bigger agencies. Okay, this is Corpus Christi. We're at the end of the highway, right? This is Nuaces County. We're at the end of the road. But you still learn from some things that are going on in other cities. And you roll that into your training. You try to predict, you trust your instincts, and you try to predict where do we need to, what do we need to be talking about. But you can never have enough training.
And a follow-up question, unrelated, but I want to get your reaction on, why leave CCPD? Why not allow the next sheriff be someone from within the ranks of the sheriff's office who know all the issues, who know all the problems, who know all the, you know, a lot of the solutions that are going on? Why not leave it to one of those, part of the command staff to take the next step up to sheriff?
That's ultimately your decision, the commissioner's court decision. I would say that I bring a wealth of public service in this county, Port Aransas, in the jail, and then my networking within CCPD is not purely CCPD network. It's outside of that. It's well outside of that. And so, you know, if, for me to make the case of bringing in fresh, and sometimes in law enforcement, we get locked into this group think where we don't see outside the walls of our office. And I haven't seen too much inside the walls of your office, or the sheriff's office, other than what I read in the paper, or what I hear from talking to the sheriff, or talking to my friends. But that's what that first six months is all about, is making those, those patient and disciplined assessments of an organization. And that's what I plan on doing.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Yep. What, what, how do you define the role of a sheriff? What do you think that the sheriff's really, his role is? And what, what is these three priorities that the sheriff needs to do?
We, we talked about two priorities immediately, right? Hiring and retaining the best quality applicants, and then doing something innovative with that jail population, other than just building more beds. The third thing that sheriff needs to be doing, I guess I'm answering your question backwards. The third thing that, the priority or responsibility that sheriff is staying engaged with the community, with the, with the county, staying engaged with all members of the county, not just a certain faction, or not just a certain group, but staying engaged, being the advocate, being the voice, being the cheerleader for those 330 employees that work for the sheriff's office. That's your job. That's ultimately what's gonna make this sheriff's office better, is celebrating the accomplishments of those 330 employees. And so that's a big part of, I'm sorry, sir, what was the first?
So you see the sheriff's role.
Sheriff's role is exactly that. Being the advocate, being the face, being the voice, staying engaged, using the media, and then using alternate forms of media, social media, and everything available to constantly communicate, not only with your employees and with the commissioners, but with the citizens of the county.
Would you say that the sheriff's kind of role more of an administrator, more than law enforcement?
Administration's a big part of it, but leadership is bigger. Administration, you have good people on your team to do the administration. I don't need to know the mechanism inside that jail door, the series of gears and latches and locks. But I better have somebody on staff that knows everything about the inner works of that jail door. So when it breaks, it gets fixed. And it's, it's the sheriff's job to monitor that, and that's administration, right? But leadership and advocating for the 330 employees is the primary.
You know, one of the issues we have in the jail, probably faced on a daily basis, but not sure how to handle it, how would you handle a suicide watch? Or what, what do you perceive that is probably the process of actually, you know, nothing is 100% proof? But how would you handle a suicide watch?
Suicide watch protocol is laid out. It's in policy, and the State Commission on jails has policy, right? Supervising and making sure that your employees are following existing, existing policy is the sheriff's responsibility, and ultimately his, his command staff and his supervisors' responsibility. Suicide's a very personal decision. God gave us free will, right? There was a time when I was working the island, when I worked three suicides in two days, in a beautiful place like the island. So you can only imagine, in a glumy, depressing place like a jail, that there has to be, and from what I understand, there is a policy and heightened awareness on certain people who are judged or deemed to be suicide risks. And as long as those policies are adhered to, and the floor officers trust their instincts above the policy, you can have policy, practice, and procedure, but you can never discount that jailer's ability to trust his instincts, and you should encourage that.
You keep mentioning policy and procedures, which is good, because I know you will follow policy and procedures. But at one point, you know, there's a, a point where you actually can go beyond the policy, make it a stronger policy, because after a certain, after so many times, if something is still happening, you know, would, would you be able to go back and say, we need to change this policy? We're doing suicide watch, you know, every 30 minutes we go off, you know, maybe 24/7, you know? I don't know. I'm asking, would you stay with those policies all the time?
Policies have to be flexible, or they have to be under constant review. In the police department, we have something called accreditation, where we're constantly reviewing existing policies. And this is one of those red flag things we talked about, or I talked about early on. You've got to be quick to recognize when there's a policy failure, not a personnel performance failure. And you've got to modify, or else you're doomed for more failure.
Let me ask you another internal question here. If, and I know a lot of police department does it too, about taking cars home, full of vehicles, for the department, sheriff's department. How do you feel about officers or administration taking vehicles home when they live outside of Nuaces County?
It's something we'd have to look at. And if, if the policy allows for that now, then it would take some scrutiny of why, I know on the police department, we had extremely significant employees who had to be on call, and several of them did, civilians did live outside, outside of city limits. But the way Corpus Christi, the geographic layout of Corpus Christi, from the island to Cal Allen, is what, 45, 50-minute drive? There are places outside of city limits that you can have a quicker response time to this county courthouse than you could from Anaville or Padre Island. So it's really not so much a geographic issue we might be talking about, but a response time issue. And I think the way the city addressed that is by...
In another county?
I'd have to look at that.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I'm glad you said I have to look at that, because that's one thing that probably would require that you look at that, because I think that at one point, there's got to be a, a line somewhere where you can, you know, you go so many miles or whatever, you know, and why is the purpose of the vehicle being taken, you know, 30, 40 miles, whatever it is?
That would be the sheriff's responsibility.
Okay. Have you ever had any experience on employee relations, dealing with bargaining? Were you being part of the bargaining team?
I sat on, I sat on the bargaining team for the Corpus Christi Police Officers Association during a contract negotiation. It was eye-opening. It was, it was very interesting the way that unfolded. And I'm a big fan of collective bargaining. I know what it's done for me and my fellow officers on the Corpus Christi Police Department over 35 years, when it came to pay benefits, working conditions. I know very well, it's a give and take, and there are, it goes above, beyond holding your employees accountable for performance and everything else. It's not all, it's not one-sided from the government to the employees. It's, it's the employees, definitely, it's a contract for a reason.
Kind of a two-fold question here. Patrols, what do you expect a patrol officer to do in patrol?
Stay, I think, and it was, it was sold to me in, like, 1982, I was riding with a field training officer, and he told me, Chris, your goal is, at any given time, if your lieutenant or your sergeant asks you, what are you doing right now? You need to be able to tell him you're doing three things. I'm monitoring the speed of oncoming traffic. I'm listening to the radio for assignments, and I'm also looking for pedestrian and any type of pedestrian activity to the side of the road. So three things, that's what I would tell a patrolman. Hey, at any given time, if magically your supervisor asks you, what are you doing right now? You need to be able to tell him that you're doing three different things in, in your mission of preventing crime, preventing the fear of crime, and providing for public safety.
When you said, when you said the word speeding, you know, that, to me, would be an interdiction as far as citations for speeding, or was it?
Observation, I mean, observation of traffic violations.
Traffic violations. So, so actually, you would allow, I mean, the officer would be allowed to give citations for speeding and...
I would assume that every police officer in the state of Texas can write a ticket.
Well, I'm glad you said that, because I think we need to write more, sometimes more tickets in the county area, you know, and we don't do enough of that, you know? So, and I know sometimes, and when I ask why not, sometimes they tell me, because we're told not to. So you, as a sheriff, or you become sheriff, you know, is this something that I would expect maybe to you to look into saying, what are my officers doing in patrol? Why do I have patrol officers eight hours a day and no, not even citations for the last four or five days? They gotta be doing something. So, and the, the other one is, how do you feel about working relations with the constables?
Constables are peace officers, and some of those constables are just as trained up as any city police officer or deputy sheriff. We're all here for the same reason. We're here for public safety of the citizens of Nuaces County. And I know at times there are kingdoms and ego-driven conflicts, but it's all about public service for the citizens, and we need to work on that.
So you would partnership with...
If that is a problem, we need to work on that.
Thank you. The other one is, on paper, you know, we, we talk about, sometimes we have a problem with overtime, so, because, of course, we're short, and they gotta do overtime. And, and this is the area sometimes that brings in revenues, which is citations and, you know, the tickets, and also the, the papers. How do you feel about the sheriff's office serving papers, court papers?
If it's a requirement of the...
It's a requirement by law, but, I mean...
By all means, we do it. And as far as, as far as overtime, that's when Cheryl and I were looking at the budgets, hey, look at these overtime numbers. Well, there's a reason for that. I know there's a reason for that. But it doesn't matter if that money is overtime money, or it's routine pay money. There's accountability for everything in public service. There should be. And if, and if there's not, we're not doing it right. But there's gotta be accountability for all monies that are being paid out.
If you get appointed to sheriff, now would you, are you running for reelection?
Definitely.
The other question is, well, not a real question. In closing, I don't want, you know, this position you're sticking requires a lot of negatives, and, but there's also a lot of positives. And, and I guess, you know, hoping the positive, there are more positive negatives. But I, I feel if, if you come on board, what are the three areas that you will target right off the bat? Because if you go on board, you're gonna come on board right away. But what are, what are the areas you have in mind that you would target right away?
Hiring, jail population, and a positive image and a positive presence for this office.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chessy?
Oftentimes, when you go last, a lot of people ask your questions, and I appreciate those questions being asked. I'm gonna try to ask the same questions to all the applicants so that I get some of the answers. And again, I appreciate the other commissioners and judges asking questions. I'd like to know your, a little more in-depth philosophy on how you would run the jail, and some of the specific things that you might change. And I'm not asking you to throw the current administration under the bus. I'm just saying, I just want to know your, I'm trying to get a feeling, because that thing is the biggest thing we, I don't know how, it's an albatross. I mean, it's just, and for every, I mean, every commissioner's court things we go to, everybody talks about how the jail is just, you know, gagging to a commissioner's court, and, and it is. So I'd like to really know a little bit more in-depth about your philosophy on some of the things you want to change, some of the things you like, some of the things you've seen over there, and just kind of go into that a little more in-depth, please.
My observations are coming from a Corpus Christi police lieutenant, right? It's gonna take me some time to get inside and to learn. I understand that the jail is doing okay at this point in time. I say okay. Could it be doing better? I'm sure it could be. Could it be doing worse? Yeah. There's 24 jails, 24 county jails in the state of Texas that are currently in violation, according to the Texas State Jail Commission. There's 24 of them. Nuaces County isn't one of those, right? It was at one time. Opinion writer for the Caller Times recently wrote that the previous sheriff, Sheriff Kalin, inherited a train wreck. And that was 11, 12 years ago. He inherited a train wreck. And to the best of my observation, as a citizen and as a police officer, if somebody who works for a department that puts the majority of prisoners in that jail, he got the train back on the tracks and moving in the, in the right direction. And it's gonna be my job to make sure it doesn't derail again, make sure it doesn't go backwards. Specifically, you asked for specifics. Adding 144 beds is not gonna cure the problem. Two or three years from now, we're still gonna be deal, dealing with overcrowding. What will cure the problem is working with all of the entities, and that's something I've demonstrated with the city. I work with the media, I work with the prosecutors, I work with advocacy groups in, in the community. There's just so many people that have a hand, they have a role in that jail. And it's the courts, it's the prosecutors, it's the clerks, it's law enforcement agencies. And you've gotta bring all of them together, because they're more responsible for that jail population than the people who are feeding those prisoners. They're the ones that dictate that jail population. And there's two things. One of them, the, it's, it's called site in lieu of arrest. And that can be done according to state law, code criminal, code criminal And that can be done according to state law, Code Criminal Procedure, Section 14. There's seven offenses, class A, class B misdemeanor offenses where a police officer does not have to book a prisoner. And they, there are things like criminal mischief, graffiti, minor possession, there's a, there's seven of them. And we started moving towards that about a year ago and then it stopped. And one of the first things I want to do is why did it stop? Which entity, whether it's prosecution, clerks, courts, booking, whatever it is that, that put up this roadblock, we got to get around it. And we've got to allow police officers to cite in lieu of arrest. And that'll, that'll do some good. The other large area that we're, a big part of jail population is people with mental health concerns. Mental health consumers are a big part of it. 11 years ago, that jail population, Nuasis County jail population was 37% had a mental health care concerns, what they used to call M H R M R. Now they call it mental health, mental disability, disability. It's a intellectual disability. And that's what it's called now. But the bottom line is we have people who are mental health care consumers being housed in a county jail. The jail diversion program here in Nuasis County in 11 years went from 37, 37% of the population having that connection and mental health problems down to 22. That's significant. We're extremely involved. The Corpus Christi Police Department is extremely involved in jail diversion and even getting more so. But there's a problem. The hospital, there's going to be a radical change here in the near future where even more people, homeless people with, people who don't have insurance, people don't have the, the means to, to get the help that they need, they're going to be pushed away somewhat from hospital service and they're going to end up in our jail too. And so we've got to address that and we've got to address it vigorously to get the people with mental health care issues to get them out of the jail. They shouldn't be in the jail. I know most of them are there for criminal reason, but we've got to find a way to deal with that population of the jail.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Another big, big thing that the sheriff does, in addition to all the things we've talked about, is the budget and running the jail as a, and I'm going to say as a, it's not a business, but it's, it's the biggest expense that we as the county commissioner's court have. And I'd like to know kind of, again, your experience with budgets, how comfortable you are with budgets and what your philosophy is in regards to preparing and knowing that budget.
My wife keeps me on a budget. I mean, I know, I know budgets. I know the, and I did, I studied the Nuasis County budget. I studied the sheriff's office budget. I know that it's broken down into three sections. 3,700 is operations, 3,710 is jail ID, and 3,720 is jail. And it's like $24 million. It's a lot of money, right? And every, every penny needs to be accounted for and scrutinized. I, in the training division, I was in the Corpus Christi Police Department's Training Division for 10 years and I was significantly involved in that budget with Commander Bob Sullivan. And I saw that mindset that, and I don't know if it still exists or not, that if you don't spend it, you lose it. And there's a lot of concern with that, in my opinion, as a taxpayer, as somebody who feels responsible. I feel more responsible for someone else's money than my own. And I realize in law enforcement, we get it all the time at CCPD. Every time we write tickets, it's viewed as a, as a revenue and it's not. It's about safety and the same thing here. Law enforcement agencies traditionally don't make money and they shouldn't be making money. They shouldn't be res, I realize there are certain things we're looking at here like commissary and support money from like the feds and people who use our jail. I get that, but we shouldn't really be in the business of making money. We should be in the business of spending it judiciously and as responsibly as possible and constantly evaluating how it's spent.
Thank you very much. You've talked about the vacancies and you've talked about recruiting, things of that nature. And that is a huge concern for all, I'm not speaking for all of us, but I believe for this entire court, that we address it regularly, we talk about it regularly. The overtime kills us every year. What we, what we continue to hear is, and, and I believe it, is it's a very hard position to fill, a lot of the positions that we can't fill because they're a very tough job and they don't get paid enough. And we're, we're going to continue to address that. We, this court, and I proudly say gave the last, the last time we gave the collective bargaining contract, it was the largest contract that the association had ever gotten. And I, I think we're all proud of that and hopefully we're going to continue working to increase those salaries as we have a contract upcoming. But that aside, because that's our, you know, that's partly a lot us. We have to make sure that the pay is correct, but, and then you got to work with what we give you. So I, I'm not talking about that part of it because I, I understand that part of it. I, I just want to know some of the more, again, I like to kind of drill down a little bit, specifics on what you think you can do to help us, as long as we help you with the financial part, keep those people in there, get rid of those vacancies and get rid of some of that overtime.
I know that, or at least I was told Juan Escobar does some really good recruiting. I plan on recruiting myself. I think the sheriff needs to be, I think the sheriff needs to be somebody who can go out there and recruit. I think we need to look at maybe like we do in, in the department I work for now, look at all different and non-traditional applicant pools. You got to be 18 years old, right? To be a correctional officer, you got to be 21 to be a police officer or coming up on your 21st birthday. So theoretically, that's three good years in there. And if we can find those kids, and I say kids, because you take an 18-year-old fresh out of high school who showed an interest because he was in the law enforcement program at King High School, so many of these high schools have law enforcement programs now. We need to be aggressively communicating and bringing, bringing those, those young men and women on board with a explore program, with all kinds of public outreach. And yeah, it's a tough job. I mean, I remember, I remember it vividly, even though it was back in 1981. I'll tell you a story. There was a, an inmate and y'all, when you're a correctional officer, you develop relationships, you know, and you try to, you, you keep them very guarded, but you still, these are, these are humans, these are souls, these are God's creations, just like you and me. And they're, they made mistakes and for, for a variety of reasons, they're now incarcerated, right? But there was this one gentleman and he knew my schedule better than me, man. He knew the, the day I would come to work and he knew, you know, he didn't know anything about my family, but one day he's a little upbeat and, and I said, dude, I don't know if I said dude, but I said, I said, sir, man, you seem a little chipper today. What's going on? He said, hey, I, I get to go home tomorrow. And I said, man, congratulations. He was doing county time. Very few of your inmates over here are doing county time. Most of them are in the process, right? They're waiting for court or waiting for appeal or waiting to go to TDC or there. But this guy was actually doing county time and he did a, a year. He did significant time. He was upbeat and he says, I'm going home tomorrow, man. I'm finally going home. And then he looked at me and he says, I don't have to come back here tomorrow. He said, goes, what about you? You do, don't you? You work tomorrow. You got to come back, you know? And that sunk in, man. And that's the nature of this job, you know? These jailers who have to come here, their only option is to quit, but most of them want the job, need the job. And there's really not a lot you can do, a sheriff can do, or commissioners can do to make their job any more attractive or appealing or happier fun. It's not a happy, fun place. But I think with consistent supervision, fair supervision, where everything is equitable if they mess up, and then going back to what I was talking about earlier, celebrating their, celebrating their job. I mean, and we can do that on social media, we can do it with our partners in the media. But these jailers, man, they need some love. They really do. And it, it counts for something. It really does. It counts for their families and it counts for them to know that they're appreciated and, and recognized publicly every now and then. I think we can do a better job with that.
And I think my last question is, and it's kind of coming back full circle. And again, I'm going to try to do the same thing with everybody, is why, and I'm going to ask this to everybody, so this is, has nothing to do with anything, why, why at this point in your career, do you want this job? I, I just really need to hear, I want to hear that from everybody that I'm going to ask everybody the same way and the same thing, I hope, is why? I mean.
My, my current boss, you might know him, Mike Markle, he, he has a speech that he gives to his command staff and he demands that everybody on, and I'm technically as public information officer, I'm on his command staff, even though I'm a lieutenant, I'm not a commander, right? But he gives a speech to everybody in that room about getting outside of your comfort zone. And so with some self-evaluation, it was pretty obvious for me to see I was in my comfort zone. And I need to get outside of my comfort zone. And this is a pretty good way to do it, you know, jumping into something like this. This is a pretty good way to get outside of your comfort zone because his philosophy is that it's only when you're operating outside of your comfort zone that you're growing, that you're growing and you're improving. And ultimately, in public service, it's all about growing and improving your service to the citizens. And that's why at this point in time, I'm willing to do this. I really am.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge.
Hang around. Tyner will take you to the room again. Mr. Markle, I'm sorry, Mr. Mandel. Mr. Markle. I didn't know the chief was applying.
He didn't either.
Mr. Mandel, Scott Mandel.
Hang meeting here, I'm telling you.
Yes, sir, please. How are you this morning, sir?
Sure well, thank you.
Thank you so much for your interest.
Sure.
I have your resume in front of me and you have stated that if you are chosen to fill the unexpired term, that you will not be running for the job in 2020. Is that correct?
Judge, that is correct.
All right, thank you. Well, we appreciate your being here. We'd like to ask you to open this up by, in addition to your resume, which was very well done, talk to the court about why you'd like to do this and, and then we'll listen to your side of the story and then the commissioners may have some questions for you.
Excellent.
And thank you for being here.
Well, it's, it's an honor and it's a privilege for me to be here. I started my career here with the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office back in 1981, so about 37 years ago. And so I found that the timing was, was unique and I'm, I'm at the, I'm sort of coming off of my business now. I've been running a security firm for the last, well, since 1994. And so as I'm passing on the torch to my sons, I thought that the timing was, was really interesting and I thought that it would be very fitting for me to, to apply for the position. And so that is, you know, why I applied. I, I have the, so what I do now is I manage detention facilities around the country. So I manage them for immigrations and customs enforcement. I manage about 2,500 beds around the country and we focus obviously on detention. And we've been, I've been doing that for, since 2001 with, with our client immigration and customs enforcement. So, you know, we're a government contractor, we work with different federal agencies, but our focus is with that agency. And that's what I've been doing for the last, oh, well, since 2001 specifically with that agency. And so I feel I meet the, the criteria. I've got the education, I've got a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and a master's degree in public administration. I am very familiar with the, the national detention standards, the American Corrections Association standards, Texas Jail Commission standards. And so I feel that I would be able to manage the, the operation with, without much change in how, in what's happening now, without having a bigger learning curve or a large learning curve.
Yes, sir. Anything else right now or are you ready to?
I can, I can go through my resume, but you said you have it.
The resume we have and we've all read that, I'm sure.
Right.
It's very impressive, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll open it up. Commissioners, do we have questions for Mr. Mandel, please?
Don't let me go again, huh? First, okay. How much jail experience do you have?
Well, when I started here, I worked in the jail a short time and ever since I've been, so short time meaning a, a month maybe at the most, I was in communications and then I transferred over to missing persons. And when I left here in 86, I was working as a detective sergeant in missing persons. So my experience really comes in on the federal side. So I go and I open these facilities. So when we take over a facility, we assume a contract and we go and take over that contract and I am in those facilities, I'm inside the wire for every contract. And many of these contracts, I go and I move, like we had one in New York City and I actually moved, I, I had an apartment in New York City because I spent a great deal of time and I invested a great deal of time in ensuring that these contracts work very well. So I, I would say that since 2001, everyone that we've opened, I've been there, I've worked inside the wire with these folks. I've helped establish procedures and ensure that we are following the guidelines to meet the standards. And I can proudly say that every inspection that we've had, whether it be PBNDs, National Detention Standards or ACA, we've passed with a 98 or better. We've never had a failing grade, not once, under, under my tenure and at those facilities and locations. So I would say since 2001.
Okay. In your opinion, what are the two main issues that the jail is facing?
Well, I have been focused on, on my career. I haven't really kept up a lot with what's happening here, but I think that the challenges that face any facility, number one, are anything that creates a liability. So you've got suicides, you've got riots, or you've got potential escapes, anything that creates a liability is a key. And number two is probably retention. We don't have much of that happening on, on our side because we, our folks, they're all under union, they're all unionized and they make anywhere from $20 to $30 an hour plus benefits. So they get paid pretty well. So we don't have a, a big revolving door in our arena. But I am assuming here from what I've heard and from what I understand that retention is another big challenge facing the, facing the county.
So what would you do to solve that?
Well, I'd look at the budget first and find out where we're at with the budgets. And I would see what, what the, what we've done in the past and if you've reached out to the, have you reached out to the community? Have you actually had maybe worked workshops or, or anything else where you've had days where you, you know, maybe they put something together? I, I think Channel 3 does a hiring workshop. I, I'd be curious to see how much of that's been done. For us, we create a pipeline. So our pipeline is we, we advertise and bring people in early on, we get them trained. And once they meet all the requirements and, and then we put them on part-time. So when we have a vacancy, then we fill it with a part-timer that then becomes full-time. So I think reaching out to the community, reaching out to the colleges, find out who really is wanting to follow the career in law enforcement and corrections. I think that would, would be one thing. And then looking at the pay and finding out if there's any, any room and what the expectations are with the budgets for the following years.
Okay. And do you support and will you enforce 287G?
I'm not familiar with 287G.
Okay.
What is it? If I may ask?
Immigration, the sheriff has been very criticized because of his enforcing its laws that are being, that you're supposed to enforce if you have to, if you stop an illegal and you bring them and then you, and then you report them to Homeland Security, I'm assuming. Is that correct?
I don't let my personal opinions get in the way of enforcing the laws and I would not.
So you would support and enforce all laws?
I would enforce the laws, all the laws, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I don't play politics with it, nor do I let my personal opinions get in the way. So yes.
Okay. Are you familiar with the budgets, the three different budgets that the sheriff has?
No, I, I am not familiar with the sheriff's budgets. I am familiar with the budgets. I manage about $80 million a year now. I've got about 800 employees that we manage and we manage them in three states. We've managed them in five states before. We have about 100 buses and 100 vans and then we move detainees all around the country. So I'm familiar with budgets. I administrate, I manage and oversee the operations and, and so yes, I am familiar with budgets, but not the sheriff's budgets. No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So you're, you're familiar with, you know, all the, all the standards at the federal and state level? Uh, it seems that it's what you mentioned, it's what you have here in your resume. Also based on your experience with the sheriff's office. But what, what would you recommend, or what do you think is additional training or support that the employees in the Oasis County Sheriff's Office need to help them be better servants, to help them improve in the jobs that they carry out every day? Do you have any suggestions with that?
Well, I'm a firm believer in continued education, number one. One of the things that has helped us succeed is that we create a, a, a quality assurance program where a quali- quality assurance officer, as they go around and perform their duties, they ask questions of, of all the officers at all the posts. And they try to, if they don't know the answer, and it's not a gotcha kind of thing, it's more of, if they don't know the answer, they educate them. Because later, eight months later, a year later, when the auditors come through, they want to hear a certain answer. So I think continued education, continuing education is very important. And I would, I would strongly advocate for that, no question.
And also, so you're a businessman, you're, you, you mentioned you have a eighty million dollar budget that you, that you manage uh, as the CEO of your company. Um, and you did kind of mention a little bit earlier, but I mean, why, why tackle this challenge? I mean, why not just stay in business or just, you know, work with your sons in that transition there? What, what, what is that calling to you to want to come and serve as sheriff?
It, you know, I hit a point in time in my career where I'm ready to pass the torch. And I am ready to pass the torch, and I've begun to pass the torch about a year ago. So my sons manage the business, I don't manage the day-to-day operations. And as I said earlier, I, I, I started in public service here under, uh, Solomon Ortiz and then James Hickey. And, uh, I would love to be able to serve the public again and finish out my professional career, um, as a sheriff in Oasis County. I think it would be very fitting to finish my career that way, when I saw that come up, I thought it was a unique opportunity.
Thank you. Joe?
So if you get appointed sheriff, uh, do you plan to run for election in twenty?
I, I do not.
How do you feel about suicide watch? When you hear suicide watch, what did, what does it come to mind? What, I'm sure during detentions, you know, you have issues like that, what, how do you, why would you handle a suicide watch?
Well, the first thing is, is that we have custody of these people, so I, I think about the human aspect first, we have that level of responsibility. Secondly, it's a huge liability for the county, there is no question about that. So we have not had one in my years, right? We have not had one die, uh, or commit suicide. And we watch folks that are placed on suicide watch twenty-four hours, and we put somebody there to watch them constantly. And we'll rotate and off, the officers out, because after a while, obviously, you get tired of watching something for any length of time. So I think the longer you leave them there, the more bored they get, as we've found in the past. And so we, uh, we rotate those, those folks out quite a bit.
Twenty-four seven?
Yes, sir.
What, what do you, how do you, what would you define the role of the sheriff? I mean, what do you think really the main role of the sheriff? And what are the three priorities as a sheriff that is really, uh, he should be concerned of? Say you go into sheriff next month, and what, what are your three priorities that you think are important?
So I worked for two, and I, and I watched how they managed and how they administered it. I think the sheriff has a role as a chief law enforcement officer, but his role is to ensure that they manage the jail first and foremost. I think that's very important. And I understand there's other ancillary tasks that go with that. So you've got patrol, you've got warrants, you've got civil, you've got, you know, other divisions, with you got criminal investigations division. But I, first and foremost, and I think the largest part of the budget is the jail, if I'm not mistaken, I would assume that. And so I, that would be a huge priority for me, number one. Number two, I would bring my level of, of experience and knowledge and work to find out what issues the staff believe that are occurring now, and see how we can overcome that. Because really, they make you who you are. And, and so I would look at that as a, as a priority as well. But I would spend a lot of time evaluating, I would spend sixty days evaluating, I'm not someone that's ever come into an operation and made changes immediately. I would spend sixty to ninety days evaluating the staff, performance, where we're at. And then at that point, start making some determinations based on the data that I've collected in that timeframe.
How do you feel like, uh, personnel, staff, uh, taking cars home? Not so much locally, but outside the county line?
So it depends what the county policies and procedures are, but if, if they're not defined, I, I would have an issue with people taking cars out of New Oasis County unless it's been specifically approved by this commission or, or someone. But I, I would have an issue with cars leaving New Oasis County because of liability.
And you mentioned the detention centers, immigration, and, and the border patrol and all that, um, so you have, um, experience with the, with contracts as far as the immigration contracts, detainees? I guess you would have to have contracts with immigration to hold a certain amount of detainees, right?
So we manage the federal detention facilities that, that immigration and customs inform, uh, enforcement currently uh, manages under their control, so it's not like private prisons, so we work under their auspice. And so, um, our contract, when we bid on these contracts, is with Homeland Security, with ICE. And so, yes, we have contracts where they manage these facilities, some last, oh, from five years up to about eight years.
And you have, do you have experience, yeah, I believe you would have experience, or how much experience do you have in collective bargaining and employee relations? Do you get involved with those since you?
I am, every one of our employees, as a matter of fact, is part of the collective bargaining agreement. And we have different unions that we deal with, so I'm very involved in negotiating the contracts, I have been in the past. As a matter of fact, we have one tomorrow down in the valley. Um, my staff is going, and I may pop in and visit and see how that, how that's, that's going. But I don't expect any problems, I'm very involved in talking with union, union folks. I called the union president yesterday, and I'm giving you an idea of my involvement here. So I called the union president yesterday, and I asked him, what, you have any big issues that we need to be concerned about? And he said, no, and he asked me, and I said, we don't either. And so I don't think we're going to have any issues there with, um, with moving that contract forward. But I do stay very involved with them, I, I read the collective bargaining agreements and have been a big part of that, and, and have been at every one in the past.
As a sheriff, uh, you know, because the job, to me, the job of the sheriff by law too uh, requires that the sheriff serves papers, you know, court papers and, uh, sheriff warrants. How do you feel about that, it, about your being, one of your main responsibilities, we actually would be serving those papers and serving those warrants instead of passing them on to the constables?
Well, so I did that when I was here, between eighty-one and eighty-six. And I think that a lot of it has to do with what the, the current mission, the role is, and what the intent is of, of the governing body as well. I mean, it depends on budgets, it depends on, is it easier for us to do that, to pass them on or to serve them? And, and again, I, I did that when I was here during my tenure, uh, for a period of time. So, uh, the main function, obviously, is where you have your biggest liability, and that's with the jails. And I don't know the, I don't know what the income stream is from serving those papers, I don't, I don't know that, that, that yet, without looking at the budget. So I would evaluate that. But again, I wouldn't make any immediate changes, you know, through the first of the year.
And how do you feel like, working with, like, you had to work as constables and the, you know, do you have an issue working with constables? Or do you understand the constable's role in, in this, uh, in, in Oasis County?
I do, and I've worked with the constables before, I've worked in the past with Ronnie Polston and, and a number of constables out in Anvil. I think it's very important that the sheriff, uh, it's very important that the sheriff work with the constables throughout New Oasis County, because we are one big law enforcement team. And so I think communications is critical, and I would go out and reach out to all the constables and visit with them personally, without question. And hope to, and I don't know, uh, I'm sure that's happening now, but I would, I would definitely, uh, develop a rapport with, with all of the constables, each and every one. If I'm not mistaken, I think the patrol division, they may not have enough staff, so I understand the constables, as they serve their papers, are able to cover some areas in Port Aransas and, as well as Robstown and, and maybe, uh, Bankettie or some other areas, but I would, I would very much make it a point to ensure I spent time with each one of them.
Do you see a problem with your patrol officers being jailers when you need them?
Right now, in, in what we do, we, I don't like people standing idle necessarily and being unproductive, I, I have issue with that. So in our union agreements, we have our drivers, our transport officers, our armed transport officers. If they're not doing a transport mission or run, they stand down, put their weapon up, and they go inside the wire and work inside the wire. So it depends if, what's been the, the past practice, it's depend if, it depends if they're trained properly. I wouldn't put anybody back into that environment if they didn't have current training. And also, again, depends on the budgets and where the mission really lies. You know, you, you hate to move people down and leave the county unprotected. So it just depends on, on what the priorities are, or what they've been.
So you can deal pretty good with stress, you feel?
Uh, yes, yeah, stress hasn't been an issue for me, uh, so far, I'm fifty-five, I, I don't take any medication. I, uh, I know that's a little personal, but I, I don't have issues with stress. Uh, I, I manage our staff pretty well, we have fantastic people underneath me that I work with, that, that are able to, that do what they need to do, and so they just let me know when there's issues, or let my sons know when there's issues. And then if there's something I have to address, then I address those matters, or I'll get involved. But I'm, I'm playing more of a role of consultant, a, a board of directors role. And so, um, there's a little process that we have, but no, stress, thank God, has not been an issue for me.
Wish I could say I was fifty-five too. But, um, I don't have any other questions, Joe.
Commissioner?
I can say it, and I'm, and I'm stressed, so, um, Scott, thank you for being here. Uh, I'm, I'm trying to ask the same questions to everybody, so I can kind of get a, a good response on the ones, um, that I need to hear about, and, and some of our commissioners have already asked them. Um, I, I really would like to know a little bit more about your running of the jail philosophy, kind of drilling down on that. That's a big deal for, for us, uh, it's the biggest, you know, it can be the biggest headache or heartache or whatever it can be. And certainly, I'm not, again, I said this before, I'm not trying to, you know, get you to throw anybody under the bus, I'm not looking for something specific, I'm just really looking to hear what your philosophy is on how you would run the jail and what you see and so forth and so on.
So I think the first thing I would do is I would look at the staffing and find out where we are with staffing. And how many officers are working what shifts, I would look to see what our, our population looks like. And do we have, uh, are we at max capacity, are we overcapacity? And I would find out the, how, how long these folks have been working there as corrections officers, as jailers. And find out what level of, of training they have, and are they comfortable with that? And I would really, I would spend a lot of time focusing on that, because that is, again, the biggest li- I see it as the biggest liability. And so I would evaluate all those numbers, I would talk with maybe the district attorney or county attorneys necessary. I would look to see if there's ways to reduce population, if we can. If we've got some misdemeanor cases that have been sitting for some period of time, and maybe could be considered time served and we need space, I would evaluate that. It really just depends on, on finding out where we're at, where the, the, the jail is at today. But I would drill down on those issues specifically, and I would talk to all the staff, I would work all the, I would come by all the shifts, visit all the shifts and talk to the staff and, and find out what challenges they have in front of them. Because again, I think that's the basis for success here, is that they've got to be motivated, they've got to like doing what they do, and they've got to feel there's a, there's a possibility of upward mobility. But I, I would get the feel for that, I think having a thumb on the pulse is very important, and it starts there.
Thank you very much. Um, you've talked about your, your budget experience in regards to the businesses you run. Um, I, I did kind of want to know more, a little bit about your experience, knowing the sheriff's budget and how you would handle that, and, and obviously, your level of comfort with, with budgets and, and the, the specific budgets that we have and that we deal with, because it is the biggest expense that we deal with, and it's very concerning to all of us.
So when we submit a bid, we put together line items in this bid, much like your budgets. And we have to stay within those numbers, or we need to stay within those numbers. And so we look at that, and when we become close, what I call our, our caution zone, then I'm notified. I'm, I'm told, hey, listen, our uniform budget is now, it will probably be eclipsed, and, and this is what we expect to happen. So I start to look at, I look at all the, I stay very involved, I look at all those line items to be sure that, because numbers make all the difference. And so, uh, I am, uh, very plugged into what we do with our budgets. And we go back and look at our line items, we look at labor, we look at, um, again, uniform expense, we look at fuel expense, we look at maintenance expense. We, again, have a hundred buses, a hundred buses and a hundred vans on the road. So to guesstimate what the maintenance is is really a challenge, and so we do look at all of those, otherwise we lose money. And I can say that, again, during my tenure here, we've been very successful, so I think I've done a very good job with the budgets. I, I know that, that in the past seventeen years, we've run through about a, just over a billion dollars. And so we've been able to, um, we've been able to, to do well with that, and so budgets are very important.
Thank you very much. Um, one of the other big issues for us that leads to other problems are vacancies. And we have an inordinate amount of vacancies on a regular basis, which leads to an inordinate amount of overtime that we're constantly grappling with. Uh, one of the things that, uh, this court, I think, is very proud of is that we have continued to try to work with the, the labor unions and the sheriff's unions and to give them, the last time around, you know, the largest contract they've had, and we hope to continue helping on that vein, because we know we have a responsibility to, uh, help make sure that we're paying them a quality rate. So that aside, how would you deal, we, we know we got to pay more, we get that, we're going to work on that. But how would you deal with the vacancies and the retention and some specific ideas that you might have on that?
So again, I think having job fairs, reaching out to the community, finding out those that are in criminal justice classes, those that want to begin in corrections, or those that want to stay in corrections, I think is first and foremost very important. I think it's important to the people that work here, if they like their jobs, that they tell people out, maybe some of their friends, hey, listen, this is a great job, you should think about applying with us. I think that there's a, a challenge, you talked about overtime, I think the challenge is, is when is enough overtime, too much overtime? And we have overtime in, in, in our facilities, but it's what I call managed overtime. So you can have, uh, a set number of vacancies that will equal a certain amount of overtime, but at a cer- a certain point, then it becomes too much, and you've got to backfill those vacancies pretty quick, because then it gets out of hand. And it creates a lot of stress for the officers. So if you're talking about people working twenty hours of overtime, a pay cycle or thirty, it creates a lot of stress. And then that leads to vacancies as well, because at some point they get tired of it, and it affects their families, their family lives, and they may not stay, and that affects retention, so it's a trickle-down effect. So I think that you, we need to be very cognizant about that, aside from the money, the money is very important. But we pay people, uh, what I think is a very good wage, and some folks do work a lot of overtime, and they tell me, you know, we had one contract in San Antonio where some of these folks were working a ton of overtime, and they said, we don't care about the money. We're, we're losing our families, we're losing our, I'm, I'm getting divorced, I can't keep a relationship. So I think there's a very careful balance, because one can affect the other. And so we do evaluate that, and we do watch that, we determine a, what we would consider as a specific amount, a, a specific amount of overtime as being acceptable and where we need to start filling those vacancies. But I think job fairs are, and, and reaching out and advertising is very important. I think working with the local colleges as well, Delmar College and their programs, and Texas A&amp;M University, their programs as well. I think it would be very important to do that, to try to eliminate that from happening, and then just, it's really a juggle. And so talking to the staff is very important, understanding their concerns is very important. So that's what I would do.
Over, and I'll let you expound on it too, if you want to, in regards to the retention of these folks too. I mean, vacancies are important, but retention would also be, I guess, an area that I would like to hear your comments on.
Well, I think it, it can bleed easily over into retention. And so I think that if, if you, again, have too much overtime, people get tired of it after a while, it's nice to make all that money, but you've got to have a life to go with it, and you've got to be able to spend some of it. So if you don't do that and don't have that balance, then you are going to have the potential of having to fill those vacancies, and you're going to lose that level of retention. And I don't know what that level is now, I don't know the level of retention that exists now for, for this department, but I'm sure I'll learn pretty quick if I am so fortunate enough to be able to, to be appointed for the remaining term.
And then my last question is, why do you, I mean, and I know you've kind of touched on it, but really- on it, but really and truly, why, and I ask the question as to why anybody would want to be sheriff, to be honest. It's a really tough job, and I say that with great respect. But why, why do you just want to do this job?
You know, Commissioner, I, I was told back in two thousand and one, when I started my private, I went off to the private side. I finished my law enforcement side. I did my public service. And I went off to the private side, and I was told, you won't succeed. You can't succeed. I grew up in Larmada. I grew up dirt poor. I didn't have a silver spoon in my mouth. And so they said, oh, you're not smart enough. You can't succeed. And I heard this from people in my industry. And I made it a point, from then to now, to prove them wrong. I made it a point to say, I will succeed. And I've succeeded very well. And at some point, you've got to know when enough is enough. And I've started that about a year ago. It's my stand-down process. And I would love to go back and, and give back and serve. If, if I can be of assistance, and my expertise and knowledge, um, and experience can be of assistance, then I would love, love to serve this community again, and the taxpayers again. And I would love the challenge. I know it's a challenge. I, I never back down from challenge. I never have, never will. Um, and so I would love the, I would love the opportunity. I would meet that challenge.
Thank you.
Good. Is it?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mandel, thank you so much for being here, and thank you for being patient with our questions. We appreciate your interest. Uh, folks, we're going to take about a ten-minute break.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. We're back in session. Uh, Mr. Perez, thank you so much for your interest, and thank you for your service to Oasis County and to the Sheriff's Department in the past. We all have your resume and your application for the position to fill out the unexpired term of Sheriff Kaelin, uh, because he is retiring at the end of this month. What I'd like to ask you to do is to open the discussion with any comments you'd like to make, any enhancements you'd like to make to the resume, if you choose to, and just tell us a little bit about why you think you'd like to be sheriff, if you will. And then the commissioners will be asking some questions. Thank you.
Well, Judge, good morning. Commissioners, also good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to, uh, to hear my interest in, uh, the, the position of sheriff. And just to let you know that, uh, I hope that my resume, uh, speaks for itself. And with the twenty-three years' experience in the jail, I believe that, uh, that's only part of the, the uniqueness that I, that I carry. The past five years in administration, working in the front office directly under the sheriff and, uh, the chief, I believe also uniquely qualifies me for the experience of running the office of sheriff. Um, I also want to say that, uh, in the years that I've spent in jail administration and front office administration, I think that also qualifies me, uh, with the partnerships and the, the working relationships that I have with, that I've developed over the years with a lot of the elected officials and a lot of the appointed officials, uh, throughout the, the county here.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, questions, please, for Mr. Perez.
In fairness, why don't we let Brent go first?
Why don't we go first this time? Okay, I'll go first this time. Uh, if that's okay with you, Judge?
You bet. I'm
Sure, all right.
flexible this morning.
I will ask the questions that I, that I asked of the other two, and let the others pick up on theirs. Um, first of all, thank you for being here. And my first question is, tell me a little bit, kind of in depth, about your philosophy on running the jail, where you see we could improve, where you see its strengths, and just kind of drill down a little bit on that for me, please.
Well, my philosophy in, uh, when I was in the jail and overseeing, uh, shifts as a supervisor, as an administrator, is, um, leading by example. And I believe that, uh, that was one of my major strengths. Uh, the uniqueness of the people that you supervise, uh, it, it offers you the opportunities to, to kind of practice one type of management skill versus another. And, uh, I believe that that made me stand out amongst, uh, a lot of my peers, that, uh, we're also doing the same job on a, on the other shifts. And there's a, uh, a lot of people that I have supervised over the years, that I have seen, um, excel. And I'd like to think that, uh, my influence over them has, um, been imparted upon them to, to seek other, you know, um, positions within the jail, within the office, or other agencies. So.
Okay, thank you. Um, in regards to budgets, that is, the jail, obviously, for us, is a, a huge, I said albatross earlier, and I don't mean that negatively, but it is, just is for, I think, every commissioner's court in the county. It's just, it's always a concern to us. We're always worried about it. Uh, it's a big expense. Part of that expense is obviously dealing with the budgets. What is your experience with, with dealing with the budgets? And how comfortable are you? And just give me your kind of philosophies on that, please.
Well, the, I believe that, uh, the commissioner's court, who allocates the funds for our office and our operations, that, um, it's hard enough for you to, to dictate to us, this is how much we're going to give you. Then I think it's incumbent upon us also to manage those monies that are provided for us, for operating. Uh, so I think it's diligent upon us that we go through and just, new budget year, that we just start spending money. Um, I know the, uh, current sheriff has, has told us that we do quarterly reviews, that way we know how much money has been spent and allocated. And so that we can keep a direct oversight with, uh, how much money that we're actually spending in, um, you know, operations, um, supplies, salaries. So that way we know, can we spend more here? Do we need to shift some? So, um, in the jail, as a sergeant, a lot of those things don't concern you very much. But you see the, uh, a lot of the things that are, are happening that can be overseen a little bit better and not wasted, especially when handing out supplies or, uh, just needless wastefulness.
And have you been involved in the budget process at the sheriff's office since you've been there?
Yes, as a captain in jail administration, and also as the assistant chief of operations.
Okay. Um, one of the other areas that concerns us greatly, and I keep saying us, like me, but I don't mean to speak for the court, but concern, I think, I can say, concerns us greatly is vacancies. And overtime associated with the vacancies, not only from a cost standpoint, but from a quality of life standpoint for your officers and your jailers. And so, um, as, as, my, my question is, is, is going to be, how, how will you attack this? And let me say that we understand that we, part of this is financial, and we understand that, I understand, and I try to, anyway, there's an understanding that, that we have to pay better, and we have to pay more, and we have to constantly look at those things. This court gave the highest contract in the history of the contract before. We're looking forward to another contract negotiation. So that aside, because that's kind of our responsibility, is to help with the pay, what can, what do you think we can do, having lived this for many, many years, to attack these vacancies and retention, and, and cut down on some of this overtime, so there's a better quality of life for those folks?
Well, with the permission of the, uh, the sheriff and the chief a couple of years ago, uh, I attended one of the, um, orientation sessions that, uh, Human Resources puts on. And I took notes on what was being provided to our new employees. And I saw the, the, the shortfalls and what wasn't being presented, and where potentially we could step in as a sheriff's office and fill in those gaps. Because I, I believe that, uh, there was a lot of information that was not being provided. And just the, the concept with the, uh, the up-and-coming workforce is a lot different, and the approach to providing them information is a lot different. And during our, my research, they don't even call it orientation anymore. They call it onboarding. And there's a schedule of onboarding that we should follow, or that's recommended, and that, uh, our employees should meet all the key players in an office, managers, leaders, for example, the sheriff, and the chief, the captains, that are actually making the decisions for the office. And so we tried to implement those, but of course, you know, we're limited to what we can do and how we can do it. Uh, social media is another big player that we, uh, are trying to get on board to provide the information to our new, new employees, because they're social media-driven.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
Um, if we get appointed sheriff, uh, do you plan to run in 2020?
When I spoke to the sheriff several weeks ago, and previously to that, um, I expressed to him my interest in possibly running, um, and he was okay with that. Um, I don't know if, uh, that was, uh, okay, or, but he asked me some poignant questions that I think that, uh, made me look and evaluate myself on where I stood at that time. Of course, you know, support, community support, on where am I going to get my, you know, base for, you know, support and, and, you know, donations, or, you know, for funding. Uh, so, yeah, at that time, I didn't have all the answers. But I told him that in, a year into, before the filing, I believe that, uh, I would have that information, and that I would strongly consider running as a, as a candidate for the office.
Okay. Um... As a deputy chief, right? Deputy chief?
Assistant chief.
Assistant chief. Um, what three things would you change to make the department better? If any?
I know right now, a lot of things seem to be working. Uh, I don't think there's a lot of, um, major things that need to be addressed. Uh, one of the concerns is staff retention, the staff vacancies. And then, uh, with the collective bargaining, uh, session coming up and looming next year, I think, um, those are some of the key things that , uh, may, maybe need to be addressed. And of course, I think, uh, I know the judge is really concerned about, um, jail population right now. And that's almost every time we meet, he sees one of us, and he says, what's the population today? So.
So how would you change that?
If selected for this position, I know that's going to be one of the, uh, primary, um, programs that we're going to need to, to address. I know we're renovating the, uh, two dorms at the annex. We need to bring those on board, and they need to be funded. And, um, the staff needs to be made available to, to run those.
How about your suicide watch? You think it's working okay now? Or do you think you would make some changes to that? Or, you know, would it be at twenty-four seven? What, what do you, what, what is your, as a sheriff, how would you handle that?
Well, I know that, uh, the state mandates that, uh, we do, uh, every thirty minutes. At the one time, we were above jail standards, um, doing every fifteen minutes. And we have reevaluated that, and we were holding ourselves to a higher standard, uh, when state standards dictate that we only have to do thirty minutes. And so, uh, I mean, we were, it's like changing the oil, you know, in your car. It's recommended three, and you were doing it every one. And if you missed that one, you were in violation. So we reevaluated our position on doing that. We rewrote our, our standards for that. It was accepted by jail standards. So now we do every thirty minutes. And so, of course, we do have on occasion one-on-ones for those types of persons that are very high risk at suicide.
Well, you know, it only takes five minutes for somebody to commit suicide.
Correct, yes.
Um, and the other, and, and the, I've asked this for everybody, too. As the sheriff, uh, how would you, um, handle the, uh, patrol, uh, division, a patrol section? Uh, would you, um, in favor of the officers going out there and doing some traffic interdiction? You know, for safety purposes, and, and, you know, and, and any community concerns about, you know, people out there, they're always speeding, and always, you know, and that's what I hear. I always hear that they're out there speeding always, and nobody does anything about it. So how would you, as a sheriff, uh, handle this with your officers?
I read the, uh, activity reports from the shift sergeants, uh, as much as possible, daily, every shift, as, as soon as they come out. And I see a lot of activity that they're pulling over, you know, traffic violations. It may not always equate to a, uh, traffic citation, but warnings are issued. So they are doing, um, traffic enforcement, but maybe not, uh, what's perceived as receiving a citation. Um, you know, Sheriff Kaelin has made it very clear that, uh, you know, the purpose of the patrol division is to, to provide, you know, crime prevention out in the rural parts of the community. And the last census that, that, uh, from the information that I gathered, about seventeen thousand people live in the rural parts of the community outside of Corpus Christi, Port Aransas, uh, Robstown, the major communities that don't have a police force. And I think those are the concerns that, uh, we get, as phone calls, that, uh, you know, we never see people out there. And that's one of his initiatives that have been implemented, that, you know, we do a lot of public contact out there, and not just traffic enforcement. Uh, Stone Garden, uh, allows us to do that, but, uh, our deputies don't always take advantage of that, and that's one of their main purposes.
So wouldn't anything that you make sure that they would take advantage of it?
Traffic control? I mean, Stone Garden's available out there, and one of the, um, precursors to, uh, stopping somebody is usually a minor traffic violation, or, uh, an equipment violation. So that's their, uh, their first thing to, to make a stop. But a lot of officers and deputies aren't taking advantage of that, uh, opportunity to, to get, to work that and get, uh, paid overtime. So.
How, how do you feel about serving papers for the courts, warrants and papers?
Um, we don't get a, a, a lot of our civil paperwork's aren't, uh, done through us. They're done through the constable's office.
But you could do them, right?
We could do them, yes, sir.
Would you do it as a sheriff?
As part of, one of the responsibilities, uh, we could. But like I said, we don't, uh, we're not issued a lot of those. They're, those are assigned to the constable's offices.
How was your relation, how do you feel relationship with the constables?
I only know a few of the constables personally, and, uh...
About the department?
I'm sorry?
About the department as a whole.
The department as a whole? Um, I believe the field deputies have more of a, a working relationship with, uh, the constables and deputy constables. So...
How would you do it as a sheriff to bring the constables together to work with you?
I think sitting down and, and, you know, defining what our goals are, and not just what the sheriff's office goals are, but also what, you know, what each independent, uh, constable's duties are, and then trying to, to work and, and defining those, those missions.
And also, I mean, since you're there already, do you, uh, how, do you support about staff taking cars home, that, beyond Oasis County lines?
That's a, that's a decision that I would probably need to evaluate. Uh, I know that, um, we had several issues, um, beyond, uh, certain staff. But, um, I know that, uh, it's been a question, and with the court's approval, it, it hasn't been a, uh, an issue.
So as a sheriff, do you support that?
I'd have to sit down and evaluate, uh, you know, what the, uh, what I would believe is correct, and also with the, uh, the blessing of the court. So...
One more question. Were you, uh, were you part of the collective bargaining last time, when you had the collective bargaining?
I sat in as an alternate and an observer, uh, during the negotiations. I didn't have a, a whole lot of, uh, input, but I was able to observe, uh, and substitute for one of the representatives of, as the sheriff's office, or from the sheriff's office.
And the last question would be, um, I know your staffer, I know your staff is underpaid, right? The jailers, and...
Yes, sir.
And, um, what, what would be your first goal in trying to hopefully, uh, recruit people that are willing to stay there since they're paid, and they're underpaid?
Staff retention, I know, is a, um, is at the top of one of my things to, to accomplish. And, um, recruiting qualified people... And, um, recruiting qualified people. And we spend a lot of money trying to get these people on board, getting them on board. Psychological, medical exams, time, uniforms, they come in, you know, two minutes, two hours, one day, and then they quit. Um, and people just say, this is not for me. So I think our approach to bringing them on board, uh, needs to be reevaluated. I know we've discussed, um, giving them some other type of tour, so they know exactly what they're going to face when they get upstairs and eventually start working on their own. I know it's a hard, thankless job, a lot of people don't want to do it, so, um.
My last question is, when you say recruitment, do you, do you all have a recruitment plan or what?
We have a recruiter, uh, we've, you know, used a lot of tools at our disposal. We attend, uh, recruiting seminars, we attend, uh, workforce commission, you know, recruiting programs. Um, we've tried different things. Um, we've tried setting up down here at the courthouse during jury summons pools when they're coming in. We had a table up here for, um, a couple of weeks and we just didn't receive a lot of interest. So there's always continual thinking on how we can approach and then recruit qualified people.
Good thinking. Kalen?
Thank you. Chief, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Obviously you spent your entire career here with the county and we thank you for that. So with that, you've seen the training or s- you have an idea of some of that support that's needed. So what would you recommend as a sheriff, or what would you implement in creating maybe additional trainings that you feel that your officers, uh, would need to help them perform their job better? To help just take the, the office, the department to that next level? And, and what kind of support would you want to give to your officers?
I know that we have, uh, conducted some polls and some surveys, uh, a couple of years ago, a year ago. Uh, I know that the, the current chief of jail operations is trying to implement a lot of training upfront, because one of the major things that, uh, concerns the people that are currently working there is we don't receive enough training. And I know that, uh, the training is offered, you know, quarterly for the staff, but they don't take the opportunity to, to go. Uh, some courses are mandated that they need to attend, and it's been our experience that if you don't assign them, they won't go. And so we started assigning people to go and to make sure that, uh, we reduce the liability of the sheriff's office and in the county. Um, if an incident happens, and I think we've been fortunate that an incident hasn't happened, and we haven't been, uh, forced into litigation because of a lack of training. And so we're trying to, to stay proactive on that and, you know, instead of reactive and saying that, well, we didn't do that training, so we're, we're trying to accomplish that.
And overall, what kind of support also do you think that the, the officers would need, just maybe outside of training? But what else do you think to help support, uh, the job, the position that they're currently in?
I know that, uh, you know, providing the training always isn't just enough. Uh, incentives to train, uh, I know that the, through the collective bargaining agreement last time, that, uh, they're working towards their, uh, advancing of their license. But it's very, very long and, uh, they have to, because they get these courses out of the way, doesn't necessarily they mean that they qualify for an advancing license. It takes years of service plus, you know, a set amount of hours of training. Unless the, uh, the court is willing through collective bargaining to address those a lot sooner, I, I don't think that, uh, you know, they, they don't meet those standards to advance their license, their jail license, their peace officer license, until they meet those, those standards. So, um, I believe it's mostly based on pay.
And so, you haven't spent your entire career with the sheriff's office, you have a, a certain perspective on, on how to, to run this office, you've lived it, you've worked your way up through it. Uh, but why take that next step? Uh, you know, there's, there's people with other backgrounds that are coming in with law enforcement and business, or law enforcement in different, different agencies. Uh, what, what makes you, you unique, why, why are you seeking this position?
As I've advanced through the ranks, I've always tried to make a difference in, in the position that I've, uh, that I've held. I believe that, uh, the support that I have been given, the opportunity to experience has, has made it, um, I don't want to say incumbent upon me to do it, but I've taken the opportunity to embrace that. In each level of advancement that I have, you know, undertaken, that, uh, my awareness and my responsibilities have also grown. And I want to just continue to try to make a difference in the position that I hold. I know that, um, I believe the influence that I have on some people, uh, not only helps me, but it also helps them to, to do a better job. So, so I want to continue to make a difference.
Thank you. Thank you.
You'd say you spent twenty-four years in jail operations?
Yes.
Can you just briefly tell the public what jail operations is?
Well, I started out in December of eighty-nine as a jailer, um, in ninety-one. I think through encouragement of my peers and as a peer leader, uh, I was encouraged to try to advance as a sergeant. Uh, when I was promoted to a sergeant, uh, I was, uh, the assistant shift, shift commander under a lieutenant, and we oversaw, you know, jail operations, you know. Staff, making sure the staff's, you know, complying with, uh, policies, procedures, they're doing their job. As a lieutenant, you know, you're, you're responsible for, you know, not only, uh, your staff, but your, your primary responsibility is also your, the inmates that you're supervising, uh, under the supervision of the, the, your staff, your, your jailers. And, uh, when I moved to jail administration, you're looking at, uh, responsibility for everything that happens. You know, you're an integral part of, you know, operating the jail, so.
You know, when I toured the jail, that looked like one of the most difficult jobs over there. It's almost like a madhouse, I thought, so, do you think that anyone serving as sheriff should have jail experience?
Yes, you know, um, I think that, uh, only, um, a person that has done that can actually, um, understand what it is to, to, um, to know what a, a, a key check is, a security check, having to deal with, uh, situations in the jail, responding to emergencies. Um, you know, there's a, a division now that is trying to take place between patrol officers in the jail, and everybody has their opinion which is more difficult. And, uh, they all have their merits, but one of the, the things that I would like to, to, to heal is that rift between field deputies and the jailers. And that, you know, the job is equally is, is demanding and dangerous on both sides.
And you spent five years as assistant chief for field operations and the administration division. Within doing that, how involved were you with the budget?
When we get the, the budget and the budget, uh, presentations, we have to oversee what we want to look for, what we'd like to add, what we can delete. Um, you know, if there's anything that, uh, we'd like to see happen, and the justifications. So all that is put onto, uh, the budget request. And so, you know, we're, you know, the operations that I oversee, you know, I give them out and say, hey, look, here you go, is there anything that you need or would like to see? And we can put those on there in our justification, and whether it's granted or not. So we can see how much budget impact is that going to cause onto, uh, our overall operation budget, excuse me.
Okay, and then, um, I'm a big believer in following, be it local, state, or federal laws. Do you support and will you enforce two-eight-seven-G?
Um, yes. Watching the, um, the questions that came in here over the last few months, and with the, the controversy with the, um, coalitions that were questioning the sheriff's office. You know, it was plain to me that, uh, our mission was not to randomly seek out people and just arrest them because they may or may not be illegal. I think it was hard for them to understand that, uh, the persons that we were detaining for immigration were there because they were in violation or accused of violating another law or a crime which landed them in jail, which subsequently we found out that they were here illegally.
And my last question, which I haven't asked anyone, but I ran out of questions, you know, going last. Um, can you tell me the motto of the Nueces County Sheriff's Office?
Prevent crime, reduce the fear of crime, and enhance public safety.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Any other questions, please, of Mr. Perez?
Anyone? Daniel, thank you so much, thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you, Judge.
You bet. Thank you. Don't go too far. Okay, Tyner, is he here? Our next candidate is Monica Rios. Monica Rios. Want to thank everyone for their patience. You've been very good today, you get a gold star. No pay, but a gold star. Big thank you.
He's cold.
Come on. Hi, Monica. Good morning. Come on up to the mic, please, and thank you for being here. We appreciate so much your interest. We each have your resume and your, and your, and your letter, and they were both very well done. Uh, we appreciate the fact that you've been with Sheriff's Department for a long time, and that you have an interest in filling out the unexpired term of Sheriff Kalen, who will be retiring at the end of this month. And so we'd like to open this up with your making any statements you'd like to make about the job and, and why you're qualified in your opinion, and then the commissioners will have some questions for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, I would first like to start out by thanking you, Judge, and the commissioners for this opportunity to speak before you today. Um, I would also like to share, uh, thank Sheriff Kalen for everything that he has done during his time with the sheriff's office. I have thought a lot about why I am seeking this opportunity. And I feel that everything that I have done in my life, and even groomed at a very early age, um, I thought back to my earliest memory, um, of being four years old. And I say groomed because, uh, my father would have me stand on a chair at a family event and afford everyone there an opportunity to ask me questions, to talk about myself. And I think that was to help me, prepare me for today, uh, to be able to speak in an open forum and to talk about myself, and again, welcome the opportunity to have questions. So I think I was groomed at a very early age, um, or I just liked hearing myself talk. We'll see, we'll see how that turns out. Uh, my first job that I can remember was at sixteen years old, it was a retail job. And at the time, you're sixteen years old, you don't know anything better than you just want a little bit of extra money. But that was my foundation for, again, the reason that I am here today. Retail, what does retail have to do with criminal justice? That was my foundation for customer service. We are in a public service industry, so that was where I gained my foundation. I received my first management job at age nineteen. So I kind of got a feel of having to supervise people who were much older than me. But again, I developed my form of leadership style, which is I'm very hands-on. I'm very, um, approachable and I'm, um, no stranger to guidance or asking questions. So again, that's where I developed my leadership style. I went on to college, um, I worked full-time while, um, undergrad, criminal justice major, and again, was hired with adult probation. I spent ten years with adult probation before finally making the change over to, um, the sheriff's office. Again, I went to, I decided one day that I was going to work towards my master's degree. I did that while working at adult probation. So I've always worked full-time while achieving my academic, um, my academic endeavors. I am very fortunate to be here today to tell you that I feel that I am the best a- applicant and candidate because I feel that I've prepared my entire career. I have worked with Nueces County for almost twenty years, I will have twenty years in November. I feel that I have worked various aspects of the county. I have a strong, uh, knowledge of the probation department, which I think will be beneficial and help me if appointed to sheriff. I'm very fortunate that Sheriff Kalen brought me over from probation to the sheriff's office. Uh, I worked in the inmate management capacity. Um, I know that during one of his presentations, he referred to inmate management as the hub of the jail. It is a very critical division that I worked in. It entails, uh, gang intelligence, counseling, classification. One false attention to detail and the outcome can be critical. So I gained a lot of experience during my time working in the jail at inmate management. Uh, since then, I have been fortunate enough, again, under the appointment of Sheriff Kalen, to have been promoted to the, uh, position of director of training. And that's where I've remained. Um, I will have eleven years with the sheriff's office in April. So again, I am very fortunate to have been able to do that. I stand before you today and I tell you that I have walked the halls of the sheriff's office. I would like to build upon that from where Sheriff Kalen left and move forward. I would like to continue to serve the citizens of Nueces County, and I would like to continue to serve the fine employees of the Nueces County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you very much, Brent.
I was going to let you go first again.
I'll go.
There, all right, go ahead.
Hey, John?
All right. Good afternoon. You, um, you mentioned your experience with the county, your time, um, both in, in probation and also, uh, within the sheriff's department itself. Let's talk a little bit about training. So I've been asking this question to everyone, and so, uh, you may have a little bit, um, better perspective. But, uh, what would you say that is maybe lacking? Or what additional training or support do the, uh, the deputies of the sheriff's office need? What, what is it that can help them improve their job, maybe help with retention? But what, what do you see that maybe can be improved upon?
Well, um, I am currently attending the T-CO coordinators conference, and that's all we've been doing for the last couple of weeks is talking about trainings, where we can improve. And what we were told yesterday is training is the best and the biggest gift that any agency can give your employees. And I completely agree with that. Where are we lacking? I think we need to continue the process. One of the, the issues that I see is we have these mandated courses. And everybody wants to meet their T-CO requirement, so we get these courses out of the way. But we need to continue, we need to have our follow-up. A lot of times you'll have a deputy who comes out of the peace officer academy, they've met all their training requirements, they're good for four years, but where's the follow-up? So I would like to continue that, have the follow-up. Again, one of the main goals of training is officer safety. A well-trained officer is an effective officer, is a safe officer. And ultimately, you have to keep in mind that a properly trained officer will help save the county in litigation. Um, I know that we've had some issues with litigation, we've had some issues with, um, training, maybe a lack thereof, training. So again, one of my goals was to have that follow-up, that continuing of, of training. Because again, with all the information, if you don't use it, you lose it. So I think we need to bridge that gap.
And so, you've, you've moved around a little bit, but like you mentioned, you have twenty years with the county. Why, why seek this position, why move up? Why not allow us maybe somebody else that, you know, we have a lot of candidates, some have business backgrounds in addition to previous law enforcement, or maybe from other agencies? What gives you maybe the, the unique position to take that step up to, to the head peace officer, the head, head law enforcement officer of the county?
Um, again, um, I've born and raised in Corpus Christi, I've lived here all my life. I feel that I'm invested in this county, uh, um, I plan on finishing out my career here in this county. Um, I feel again that with my education and my experience, I think that it has prepared me for this top leadership role. I think that, uh, the qualities that I possess, um, I feel like I'm innovative, um, I'm a go-getter, I don't shy away from a challenge, I thrive on challenge. And I think this was, as far as my career is concerned, this is the biggest challenge yet, and I thrive. as my career is concerned, this is the biggest challenge yet, and I thrive on that. I'd like to, again, I give Sheriff Kalin all the credit in the world, and I'd like to pick up where he left off, and I want to run with it. So I think because I'm so invested in, in this county, I want to represent the citizens of this community, I want to continue to represent the fine officers of the Sheriff's Office. Again, with my education and the time that I've spent with the county, my diverse background, I think that's what has led me to my decision today.
Thank you.
That it, John?
Yes sir.
Joe?
I'll go first.
Go on a second.
Anyway, I'll ask you some questions, I've asked everybody too, so if you're appointed Sheriff, do you plan to run in 2020?
Do I plan to run on 2020? Absolutely.
Also, when you, you said, have you said you were a jailer before, or you've never been a jailer?
Yes, I am a certified jailer, I do possess a master certification, and that is, that is in combination, again, with my, I was required to complete the jail academy, however, I was hired as a supervisor for inmate management services, so I do at this time possess a master jailer license.
But you never worked as a jailer in the jail department, in the jail?
As a jailer, no, again, because I was hired as a supervisor for the inmate management services, so yes, that's correct.
And being that you've been there twenty years with the county, what three things that you bring that will make things better?
What three things? I call this my mantra, if you will. I believe my three biggest qualities, or my, my mission statement, if you will, is integrity. I believe that you always make the right decision, even if it is an unpopular decision, or it may not be the easiest decision, but that is something that I stand by. Professionalism. I stand before you today, and I'm ashamed of the first thing that I heard when I entered the Sheriff's Office. I heard that you had to speak to inmates a certain way in order for them to understand you, and it was that day, at that point in time, I said, this stops with me. That is incorrect, you are dealing with somebody's family, you are dealing with somebody's brother, somebody's sister, somebody's mother, and I continued to carry on from that day on. I didn't allow my staff to talk that way, and that is something, if you have sat in on any one of the classes that I teach, I harp on professionalism. The Sheriff's Office is a business, we are professionals, you are seen as a professional, and I would expect that anyone under my leadership would act as a professional, so that is something else that I bring. Accountability. If I am appointed to this position as Sheriff, I expect that the Commissioners and the citizens of this community hold me accountable, and I in turn would expect and hold my leadership staff accountable as well, and everyone down the chain. So those are the three things that I think that I bring.
You bring that to yourself, but the things I'm looking for is what three things would you change to make it better?
Again, like I said, I'm a big proponent of training, so I think that is something that I would definitely look at. I would definitely work to assist with the overcrowding. I would see what programs we already have in place, what can we approve upon? I would have no issue with reaching out to some of our bigger jails, Harris County, Dallas County, and see what kind of programs do they have in place? What kinds of things can they offer that we can implement here? I would like to also work on our recruiting process. One of the things that I would like to see is maybe have an additional recruiter. In a sense streamline the process, get the best qualified candidates that we can, and hopefully eliminate the retention.
And so you all never contacted Harris County and none of those other big departments yet, or?
To my knowledge, no, that's not, to my knowledge, that has not been done, but these are some goals that I would like to set forth for myself, and maybe set up a meeting and see what we can do, what ideas are willing to share.
How do you feel about suicide watch? You know, I've heard Mr. Pettis, Chief Assistant Chief, Assistant Sheriff Pettis is saying that you have policy, and I know you have a policy, and it's thirty minutes intervals, I guess. Are you happy with that, or are you satisfied with that, or you think it can be changed?
You're saying can it be?
Suicide watch.
But can it be changed? I think it's necessary. That is one of my, that was when I first was hired onto inmate management, prior to us having an on-staff psychiatrist. We did have a psychiatrist that came in three times a week, and they reviewed the suicide watches, so that was one of my main duties, is in the meantime, I met with every individual who was on a suicide watch. I was not qualified to remove them from a suicide watch because I was not a medical professional, so I made observations, and I documented those observations to ensure that the individual was not a harm to themselves, and to the officers are not, not a harm to the officers, and again, to prevent the county from litigation. I absolutely think that the suicide watches are critical, they're essential, so yes, I do feel that we need to keep them.
Is it essential enough to make them twenty-four-seven, instead of having the thirty-minute break?
Well, we have, we have the suicide watch where they are brought out of their office, they're kept in the green smock, and then once determined by the medical staff that they have somewhat stabilized, then they will return back to their unit. At that time, then we would rely on the officer's thirty-minute key checks. So the watch essentially has stopped, but they are still being monitored, and only up until the medical professionals feel that they have somewhat stabilized, and are no longer a threat to themselves.
How do you, as a sheriff, I mean, how, how do you feel, I mean, what do you expect here? Would you be willing to beef up the servant of papers, court papers, or warrants, more than what you do now?
Well, as if, as every sheriff throughout the state of Texas, the primary focus is the jail. Not to take away from any other agency, but I think that the primary focus is the jail. That is where my primary focus would should, would and should be followed up with warrants, yes, civil process, court security, and patrol. So I think that we need to continue what we're doing, but again, the primary focus should be on the jail.
As an arm of the Sheriff's Department, would you, how would you partner with the constables?
I think that we need to continue to partner with the constables, I need, we need to utilize the constables. That's another thing that I would like to see, another goal, is I would like to have a greater presence in our surrounding, outlying communities. I know that we've got Agua Dulce, and Pedro Nila, Bankeri, Bishop, Portorances, and I think that we need to have a greater presence. I know that it is being done now, but that is also one of my goals, is to have our patrol officers, and essentially the use of the constables, to have a greater presence in those outlying communities.
Much experience have you had in collective bargaining and employee relations?
Collective bargaining, personally, I have not had that much experience, other than what I discuss with my training sergeant, who is also the collective bar, or the Sheriff's Association President, but that is something that I, again, another goal of mine would be to immerse myself in that process. And the second part of your question was?
Employee relations.
Employee relations. Again, I am a hands-on individual, I started that way in inmate management. I learned the job of the inmate management supervisor first, and then I took it upon myself to learn each individual job of all of my, of my, I did, at the time, they were called counselors, they are now called inmate management counselors, but I did their job. I tasked myself with dealing with inmate needs, I did the secretarial work, the data entry, I did classification, I sat in and did the actual classification process myself, so that I could learn every aspect of the job. I sat in on gang intelligence, I helped confirm gang members in the jail, because I wanted to learn every aspect of the job that I was overseeing. So I'm a very hands-on individual.
Since you're there and been, becoming a sheriff, how do you, how do you feel about people taking cars home beyond the county lines, and do you support that?
Taking cars home beha, beyond the county lines? Well, I think that we do have an established mileage, so having, working in Nuasis County, I think that we should live within Nuasis County, so beyond what we already have in place, no, I don't think it should be allowed.
So as a sheriff, you would take that as an issue?
Yes, I would evaluate the policy, like I said, I know that we have a policy in place, and certainly I would look at that and evaluate where we're at with that policy.
Do you have any, it's, it's, I guess recruiting, you know, and sometimes I think we're lacking on recruitment, some, you know, and what is one major area of recruitment that you would actually tackle first? And I know we've got a lot of vacancies, and I know.
We have a lot of vacancies, correct.
So what, 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 how would we tackle a good recruitment?
I think that one of my goals would be, and I understand the financial situation that we're, the county is currently in, but one of my goals is I would like to add a second recruiter, and I would do this through volunteers, volunteers from within the jail, but I think that we need to target, we need to kind of spread our reach, we need to target a greater population, I think we need, I think there is still aspects of the Sheriff's Office that the community is not aware of, which kind of brings to mind a project that I worked on at adult probation, we had a community fair. We had it open to the public, and we had every aspect of the probation department there, and the public was welcome to come and ask us questions. I would like to have something, something similar to that, again, maybe have a public forum, a public location, and have every division of the Sheriff's Office present, and have the, the public welcome. I know that one of the things that we've heard from potential candidates, or potential cadets, as they leave is, this just wasn't for me. Well, I would like to kind of eliminate that from happening, and giving a potential candidate for cadet the best possible scenarios, or the best possible training that we have, so that we can keep these employees and retain them. To also tackle retention, I believe, and incentives. Again, I know that the financial situation that the county is in, we can't offer pay increases, but I know that we can offer incentives, maybe a day off, maybe some extra vacation time. So these are things that I would like to tackle, because I think that one of the problems is finding the best possible candidate, but then, once we find them, we need to be able to keep them, so.
Thank you, thank you. Rand?
Thank you Judge. Thank you very much for being here, I appreciate it. Some questions, a little, maybe a little repetitive, but I'm gonna try not to, I'm trying to ask similar questions to everyone, other than when Joe steals my question, but.
It happens.
It happens, it's okay. I would like you to dig in a little bit more into your philosophy on how to run a jail. As you know, that's, that's the biggest thing for the sheriff, you said that a couple times, it's certainly the biggest albatross for us, for, for all Commissioners' courts, I think, you know, you hear this at all, the Commissioner Court meetings that we go to, and our seminars, and boy, everybody, you know, talks about it, so I'd really like to know your philosophy on how to, you would run the jail, and, and what you see that's good, and what you see that's, needs improvement, and again, not trying to throw anybody into the bus, because I know you're with the current administration, that's not the point, it's really, I just want to know your philosophies, and I'm trying to get to know you some.
Well, I think that it is a process that begins, again, at the point of application. We need to find the best possible candidates. Now, I know that in the past, pay has been an issue, but again, we need to do our part, and again, that this is one of the reasons why I like to re-look at, revisit the recruiting process, because again, we need to find the best possible candidates. We need to give the proper education, and I know that we do that in the jail school, our jail academy is three weeks. Again, during the T-CO coordinators conference, there's talks about actually extending that training, they've incorporated some new classes. So again, training is key, it is essential. We need to make sure that our officers are prepared for the job that they have chosen to do, so training is key. Once they have trained, and once we've released them, we need to have that follow-up training, that continuation of training. Maybe we should expand the CTO process a little bit longer. I hate to see our, our officers that we've hired that leave within a week, a month, a day, we've had some that have even left a day. So these are things that maybe we need to revisit, and as sheriff, certainly I would look into, is maybe increasing our CTO process. Maybe we need to look at getting new CTOs, but again, I think that, and these are things that I would do, I would be very hands-on, I would like to meet with our new jailers, our new cadets, and continue to meet with our, our veteran officers, and see what, what do you think is working, because again, I'm, I'm open to every, to anything. We are in a situation right now where we're in dire straits, we have twenty-four vacancies as of this week. Our jail population as of this morning is eighty-nine percent, so we're in trouble, so we need to look at every avenue. What can we do to, to remedy this problem? So again, for me, it's the recruiting process, how can we streamline, how can we better that process, how can we find the best possible candidates? Again, training is essential, it's critical, it's my background, and again, getting the jailers to buy in. Once they buy in and take ownership of this facility, and realize that this is my home, this is what I do, and that we show them that we appreciate the hard work. Again, I'm a hands-on individual, I'm an approachable individual, if I hear a good idea, I'm willing to run with it.
Thank you. And let's talk about, a little more about vacancies and retention also. You know, we get that, I, I will always kind of subscribe to the theory that people in law enforcement don't make enough, kind of like teachers, different, I think they're in a different class of people, and that sounds wrong, and I don't mean that to be, I just think anybody who puts their lives on the line is, that's a different level for me, right? So we, we as a court, realize that part of this is, is pay, and you know, we're, we're very proud of the last contract that we did, which was, which was the largest raise, I think, and the largest that we've done, and we hope that we're gonna be able to continue to help working on those things. So we get that we're part of the issue, right? Okay, or I do, and I think everybody else does, but what, that aside, because you can't have, you can't do anything about what they get paid, I get that. But what can you do, and again, I'm looking for more specifics on retention, like, you know, where, and it's, it's as much retention as it is filling the vacancies, because as you just said, you fill them, and then they, poof, they're gone in two weeks, so what can we do, what can the sheriff do to help with not only the vacancies, but the retention?
And I, I agree with you Commissioner Chesty, that is a, a big issue, and again, part of my plan would be incentives. I know that studies have been done where, yes, obviously, financial reward is an excellent reward, but people are happy with just being praised and receiving some type of an incentive. What I would like to see done is first look at our veteran officers, our officers who have stayed with our agency. I know that we've got right now, one of our warrants officers has worked with this agency, has worked with the Sheriff's Office for forty-five years, and he is still working here today, as far as I know, he doesn't have any plans of retiring, but definitely, somebody who's dedicated forty-five years of their life should receive some type of reward, and we may not be able to offer them financial compensation, but maybe, again, once we've kind of remedied our, our vacancies, maybe offer him maybe a week's vacation, you know, as a reward for dedicating his forty-five years, and I would like to see things like that done, from our most veteran officer to our new recruit. If we have somebody who, you know what, has made it past their probationary period, why can't we offer them a vacation day? You know, things like that, these are the things that I would look like, that I would like to take, take advantage of, is how can we reward these officers to say, hey, you know what, we do appreciate the hard work you're doing, we do acknowledge that this job is a difficult job, and no, it is not for everybody, so you have made the honest decision to be here today, what types of things could we do? So that's part of my plan, was to look into maybe some vacation days. I know that we have, we've implemented corporals, but see what other types of rewards, maybe throw in there another type of supervisory capacity, maybe a senior officer type thing, but we need to reward these people who have dedicated their lives and are choosing to work with us, because yes, they can, I know that Sheriff Kalin has mentioned many times, they can go work in the oil fields, they can leave Corpus Christi, but we want our community to stay, our citizens to stay here. We want, we don't want to have people leave to look for other jobs. I know that I don't want to ever leave Corpus, this is where I was born and raised, I plan on raising my son, so we need to get our officers to buy in and to want to stay here. So that would be one of my main goals, is how can we make them continue to feel valued, appreciated, and want to stay working for the Sheriff's Office?
Thank you, and you've, you've answered my why do you want the job question, so my last question really is in regards to budgets and your experience with budget, and again, I'm trying to drill down a little bit more on that, to see what you, it's a huge budget, it's a huge financial part of this county, and so I'm, I'm interested to know what your response, or what your experience is in regards to this particular budget, since you're an internal candidate, and just budgets in general.
And I'll start with my training budget, which I like to joke with the Sheriff's Office training budget, I call it a unicorn, it's kind of non-existent, so I've gotten very creative with working with very limited means. I like to bring the best possible trainings that we can, and I've happened, I've been able, I've been fortunate enough to accomplish that free of charge, the trainings that we've offered, I've coordinated. The trainings that we've offered, I've coordinated with the Texas Veterans Commission, I've also coordinated with different law enforcement agencies to bring trainings to our agency free of charge, and we offer those trainings, again, free of charge to any law enforcement officer. So these are avenues that I would look at. Now, as far as the expanded budget, I know that we've got a good team in place. So again, that's going to be one of my primary goals and duties. I plan on being very, very busy for the first few years if I'm appointed to sheriff, because I will immerse myself in every aspect of the sheriff's offices, whether it be the budgeting team, whether it be CID, warrants, patrol. So I'm going to immerse myself to broaden my knowledge base, because right now, yes, I do recognize that my interaction with the budget is very limited, but I promise you, within the first few months, I will be highly educated with budgets.
Thank you for your time.
Carolyn?
Well, I want to commend you for applying. This is a field that's dominated mostly by men, so it took a lot of, in your self-confidence. So, good for you for doing it.
Thank you.
The training as a jail person, you completed the academy.
Yes.
Tell me why, how that would affect your being sheriff if, because you don't have that experience?
As far as the-
On site, hands-on with jail experience. You said you completed the academy.
Yes, I actually completed the jailer academy when I was first hired, and then while I was working as the inmate management supervisor, I went through the peace officer academy. So I have completed both academies. Having worked in training, I'm somewhat restricted to having the, having training being my primary goal. If I'm appointed to sheriff, I will have the autonomy to spend my time and focus my attention on every aspect. I fully intend on riding with my patrol officers, getting a feel for what they do to the day to, on the day of the day. I believe, again, on being hands-off, being interactive. Even though I didn't work in a jailer capacity, I walked the jails every single day. I met with inmates in the jail, in their units, in their cell, every single day. So I have a very good feel, a very strong grasp of what they do. So, to answer your question, if I'm appointed sheriff, my first task is to immerse myself in building my knowledge on the places that I probably am a little bit more restricted.
But do you think it should be a requirement to have jail experience to be the sheriff?
Absolutely. If we're planning on supervising the jail, then yes, we have, and that's why I feel strongly in the experience that I do possess, that I am familiar with what they do on a day-to-day basis. Again, I, my office was in the jail, sixth floor of the jail. So absolutely, I think that it is important.
Okay. Do you support and will you enforce 287G?
I think that that is something, I know that Sheriff Kalin has spoken many, many times on that, and it, as far as the jail is concerned, our process has not changed. We are not actively looking for individuals who are illegal immigrants, so that process has always been in place. It is a necessary, a necessary part of the job. So I would, again, evaluate what we already have in place, and basically, the only thing that has changed in that respect is the way that the agencies were notified. We, is now data entry, so in that respect, it hasn't changed, so it was, it's already been in place for a long time.
Okay, well, I think I want to ask you, I want a yes or no. Do you support it and would you enforce it?
I do not, I would not enforce our officers being out in the field, looking for illegal immigrants. I don't think that that is part of our job. Again, our focus is the jail, so I would, I would stick to that, but no, I don't believe that we should be out in the community searching. Now, once they're in the jail and they are booked into the jail, then the process is different. So yes, I would, I would continue with the process that is in place right now.
Well, it's, the law is enforcing federal immigration laws.
Yes.
It's a federal law, so-
Yes.
You know, I think we should support and enforce all the laws.
Absolutely, and I do agree with that. And again, if we come in contact with somebody who does have, who has an immigration violation, well then absolutely, it is our responsibility to take that person into custody and follow, follow the proper policies at that point.
What do you think the two problems, the main problems in the jail are?
Again, it's going to be the vacancies. We, we can't seem to, to fill our vacancies, we can't seem to, to hold our people. And again, I think it goes back to our recruiting process. So those are going to be two of the things that I'm really going to look forward, look strongly at. You know, our vacancies, it seems to, will, will get to a point where they've reduced, and then all of a sudden, it starts to increase again. And like I said, right now, our vacancies are so high that we need to find the best possible solution. So I think that's going to be one of the things that we're going to tackle. And again, I want to find the best possible candidates.
Okay. Do you know the motto of the New Haces County Sheriff's Office?
The motto? Gosh, I've heard it, I'm drawing a blank right now.
Prevent crime.
Prevent crime, reduce recidivism, and, my goodness.
It's prevent crime, reduce fear of crime, and enhance public safety.
Yes.
It's just okay. Thank you.
You knew that.
It, it's there somewhere.
Thank you so much.
I've heard it so many times, yes.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, go for it.
Okay.
I want to take about a 10-minute break, and then we will bring in Larry Young, who is our last candidate. Okay? Our last candidate is Larry Young, and Tyner has gone after Mr. Young. So as soon as he's here and we get the full court back, we'll begin. Morning, Larry. Please come up front, if you will, please. Good to see you again. Larry, we'll have to wait just a moment for Commissioner Gonzalez to come back, and then we'll be ready to go. Didn't mean to rush you in here, but I thought we were ready.
Sir.
Just one second, please. We thank you for your patience. It just happened you were last today, but that doesn't mean anything at all. We have your resume and your letter, which we appreciate very much. It indicates your experience. What we'd like to ask you to do first, if you would, is go ahead and talk to the court a little bit about why you'd like to do this job and why you think you're qualified, and then the commissioners will have some questions for you.
Okay. My name is Larry Donnell Ingram-Rucker Young, Sr., and I go by Larry Young, and I'm a career police officer, law enforcement. And I actually made up my mind kind of in the, in the last day, because I was getting a lot of text messages and phone calls and, and all that, and I said, "Well, you know, if you have confidence in me, then I'll, I'll give this a try." I've never envisioned being sheriff, never envisioned being police chief. I've always envisioned myself as a detective investigator, the guy on the ground, the supervisor that causes things to happen out there, makes things, makes sure things is right. That's what I've always envisioned. I've never just thought of myself as being the ranking law enforcement officer. But I guess other people are believing me in that way, and so that really caused me to move forward, and that's why I stand before you today. And, and thank you for, for having me here. I appreciate all of you having me here. And to the citizens, thank you all also, and I've enjoyed serving every one of you. I've been doing this now for nearly 39 years, and I still love it. It's, it's been the best thing in my life, besides my wife and my children, my 20 grandkids. I'm very satisfied with my career.
Thank you very much. Why don't we start with Commissioner Mards?
Okay, yes, sir. Good afternoon, Larry.
Good afternoon, sir.
You know, one of the, one of the things that I look at for, you know, as a voter, as a citizen, as a commissioner in New Haces County is, you know, what can be improved? So my first question to you will be, it's what do you see on the training side, on the support side, that can be created or given, or maybe that's, that's lacking, in your opinion, that can be brought to the sheriff's office if you're selected?
Well, you really can't do too much training. As a law enforcement officer nearly 39 years, I'll tell you this, is that when everything goes to crap, you rely on your training. And if you don't have good training, then you're not going to make it, you're not going to survive it. And I was lucky enough to be appointed to, the RTA is one of the board members over there, and that's one of the things that I recommend heavily, is training. And the training in the area of shooter, and also of how to deal with people, because law enforcement officers are, deal with people in usually the, the manner and the worst way, because you're called to settle a problem, arrest somebody or something like that. And, and the way you handle people is, is determines how, whether it's going to escalate or not. And you don't want things to escalate, you want to de-escalate everything. That's why we have this de-escalation training now. And it's statewide, and it's required, and, and we put that mandate over there also. We have a lot of growing to do, and, and, and I'm not talking about the SO, because I'm not, I don't know what their training curriculum is, but that's something that we have to look at. But in all areas of law enforcement, we, we must adapt to what other agencies are doing or what businesses are doing, and that's what law enforcement doesn't seem to move fast enough. They're usually behind the curve on those things. And that's the reason why I think some of the problems exist between citizens and, and law enforcement. As far as changing the training or anything like that, I wouldn't even begin to know anything about that until I look at the curriculum. And as far as problems over there, I don't hear many problems with the SO as far as dealing with the public, I don't hear that. I, I hear other things, and, but every time there's a sheriff that's elected into New Haces County, there's improvements. And, and I think we, no matter who is sheriff now and who is sheriff next, there's gonna, there should always be improvements. We should always move forward and improve our agency and relationship with our citizens. We've got to work on that.
Thank you. And so, question I've been asking everyone also is, why move, why, you kind of mentioned in your opening statements, but why look to become the chief law enforcement officer in the county? I mean, why not, you know, stay in private investigations or go back to work with the state, or, you know, you, you retired from law enforcement and you've remained active, I know, as a reserve officer, but other than people in the community asking you, what, what else is there that made you say, "I have the qualifications, I feel that, that I'm able and, and really can bring something to serve as sheriff"?
Well, it wasn't me that made that decision, actually it was others around me. They, they trust me, trust my judgment, trust what I've done, trust my selection of, of investigators and detectives into Department of Family Protective Services, Special Investigations Division. I was promoted and, and I went to Houston, where I supervised 70 special investigators in Houston and Harris County, and that's quite a big job when you have to work with other agencies, not only with DFPS, CPS, APS, but Harris County, Houston PD, and all the other little departments around there. It's, it's a big task, and, and it looks like I did well. My, my constituents said I did well, and I was able to work with departments where I knew nobody, absolutely nobody up there, and we got things done. And when I left, we had, I had a line of people, say about 10 or 12 people, wanting to come into my unit. So we had a lot of success, and, and I focused on a lot on training, fairness with the employees and training. And it's, it's a big deal to really select the right people to do a certain job, and I focused on that because, you know, if you're going to invest in an employee, you want that, you want the right employee, and you also want them to stay. Why spend the time on getting somebody there and then they leave? And CPS has had a huge problem with that over the years, because you've been there for a number of years, and we lose about 55% of, of our, the people we hire in the first year, and that's horrible. And that's something to improve on. But I think I bring trust and integrity, I bring training, I bring confidence, I never have a closed mind on anything, I don't, it's, it's not about party, it's not about what school you went to, it's not about that, it's about getting the job done, it's about serving, it's about serving fairness, it's about being just. And a big deal with me, and, you know, I, and I'll say this to everybody, I got rolled up a couple of times when I was a police officer, and it was because I was too meticulous, and I never really understood that. And, but, and I'm still that way, by the way. I kind of overdo things, because when it gets ready to go to court, you want to be ready for everything. And that's, that's what I'm about. I, I kind of overdo things in preparation that something might, there might be a twist there in the end, so that's what I kind of do.
Thank you.
Carolyn?
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
In your opinion, one of the two biggest issues facing the jail?
Well, what I hear is wages and keeping people. And I know that there's a shortage right now, and that's, that's, and that's something that's probably been going on for a number of years. No matter what sheriff it is, you can't satisfy everybody. I was talking to Sheriff Kalin earlier, and we've talked before and through the years, no matter who you are, you're not going to satisfy everybody, but what you're there for is to, is to work through those problems. And if problems are brought up to administration, the sheriff, or whoever it is, you've got to look at them and address each and every one. So I'm not here to stand before you and tell you that I know what their problems are, because I don't. I only hear certain things from certain people and certain groups, and whether they're valid or not, I don't know, but you might hear the same thing several times. And you certainly want to address those issues, and you want to get out there and look at them yourself.
Do you have a solution for retaining employees?
Well, yes, ma'am, I, I don't, I don't know if you would call it a solution or not, but when you compare New Haces County to, and I know the judge probably don't want to hear this, but I'm sorry, Judge, we're kind of on the low side of, of the pay scale, and we, we need to make ourselves more competitive, because I think we have a good sheriff's department, and I think we've had a good leader, and, and, but we've just got to bring up our pay a little better, and we can expect more when you do that, too. We can expect more. You know, sometime you think you get the best with the most money, that's not really true, but we're able to look at the people that come and apply, and extensively look at their backgrounds, their education, their training, their mindset. You know, I think mental evaluations are very important, as you can see with all the shootings and stuff going on out there in the world. But, you know, you've got to do more testing, more questions, more interviewing, and get the pay up there that's make it competitive, competitive to attract, you know, police officers from, from everywhere, you know? It's got to be attractive, you know? And it's not all about money, because I remember when I started, you know, I took a, I took a big, big hit when I, when I came to CCPD, but through the years, it evolved, and you get back and then you move forward. That's what I'm looking at.
I'm a big supporter of supporting local, state, and federal laws.
Yes, ma'am.
So do you support and will you enforce 287G?
That's the law, ma'am. You must enforce it.
So that's a yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. How familiar are you with budgets, especially the sheriff's budget?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the sheriff's budget. I am familiar with having, back in the day, and participating in departmental and division budgets at CCPD. I am also familiar with when I was promoted and moved to Houston with Special Investigations Division. We had seven units up there, and we had individual as well as a regional budget. So I'm familiar with setting that, being involved in that, not setting it up, but in being involved in that, and trying to stay within constraints, and then also trying to grow and grow our budget. So I'm familiar with that process, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Joe?
If you get appointed sheriff, would you run in 2020?
That's a good question, Commissioner. That's a good question, Commissioner. I don't know. I don't know. I can't stand here and say that because I I don't believe in lying to anybody. And and I'm not going to say I will or will not. I I would stand here and say that if I believe I did a good job and if the citizens as well as yourselves believe that I was doing a good job, I would run. But if I didn't, no, sir. I'm not here for failure. I'm here for success.
Thank you. Can you define the role of the sheriff? If you were a sheriff, what what do you think the role, main role of the sheriff is? And what are the three main priorities, once you come in, would be to try to target those three, those three priorities?
Well, I think first of, first of all, the main role of a sheriff is to be the leader of the sheriff's department. And he is the chief officer in the county. Now, priorities are sometime are set out here looking in like a fish tank effect. And then, of course, your priorities may change once you get inside because they become real because there may be something different going on once you get there. But I think like I said to Commissioner Vaughn is that wages is a big deal, recruitment and retention. We don't want people leaving. And we've got to keep them there once we get them. And I'm not talking about keeping bad people. I'm talking about keeping people that are doing their job. And of course, people mess up from time to time and you deal with that. But retention, wages. And, you know, the fourth thing that I throw out there, too, is is keeping the sheriff's department, the view, the perception of what people think of the sheriff's department. I think that needs to, it's it's been going well. I think it's been going well. But it's something that we can do, we can grow upon there, too. You know, I I understand we don't have a narcotics division over there. I think that's, that's, that's not good. You know, narcotics exist in the county just like it exists in the city. And we've got to get out there and do those things that that our community requires us to do. And narcotics, I think, is one of them.
Okay, I don't know if you're familiar with Suicide Watch or not, but if you become sheriff, I mean, what kind of Suicide Watch would you like to see?
Well, I don't know much about Suicide's Watch other than what it basically is because as a policeman, detective, investigator supervisor, whatever, I never participated in that. But I will tell you this is that if someone is, if you believe that they are suicidal, and I am a certified mental health officer, by the way, then there must be eyes on that person all the time. And you must do everything you can to remove things that have access to suicide. And you've got to recognize that. And people need to be trained on that. And that's one of the problems is training, eye zone, that kind of thing. If you, and I guess the type of area that you have them in means a lot, too.
So you're saying eyes like twenty-four seven?
Cameras. Yeah, there's got, there's got to be eyes on someone. And of course, you can't have a corrections officer standing there watching all the time. But I'm sure that there's more, more cells than just one. And so, yes, you need dedicated eyes.
Do you have any experience in collective bargaining or employee relations?
Yes, sir, I do. I was the union president for Corps of Police Officers Association for a couple of years. I was vice president for, I don't remember, eight or ten years or so. I was regional director for the Combined Law Enforcement Associations of Texas for ten years. And I participated in collective bargaining long before I ever took office at CCPD or CCPOA. And I participated in communities all across Texas in collective bargaining. Yes, sir, I'm very well aware of that. And also meet and confer, which is a lesser degree of collective bargaining. And I think it's a good thing. I think it's a good thing for not only the department and its its employees, but I think it's a good thing for the community. Yes, sir.
As a, as a sheriff, I guess you, we talked about the laws a while ago, what the law requires. And of course, we all, we all do what the law requires us to do. But sometimes we don't, we kind of slack off a little bit. And as a sheriff, would you also make sure that the function of the sheriff department would be to serve papers for the courts and warrants?
You know, the duties of the sheriff department are many. The the duties of the sheriff are many. It's a service organization. And so if that is, and I know it's a part of the job. So, yes, sir, your answer is yes. It's, there's no way of getting around that. Yes, sir, that's, that's one of your duties. That's something that's expected. That's something that's going to be done.
You said a while ago that you should have a drug interdiction program or something in the sheriff's?
Narcotics, yes, sir.
So I guess in fact, for traffic interdiction, traffic, I guess you believe in having, your patrol officers also involved in traffic interdiction?
Absolutely, sir, absolutely. You've got to have a well-rounded patrol force and department. You know, whatever the city's doing, SO should be doing. And whatever the SO is doing, the city should be doing. And you should also be looking at the, your state and your feds, which you can call on in most cases for training and stuff like that. So, yes, sir, absolutely.
So you won't have any problem dealing with the constables? And your constables will be actually your right arm or left arm, whatever. Would you partner with the constables to work closely with them?
Oh, absolutely, sir. You know, but sometime what law enforcement doesn't do is they don't, they don't use their resources. And the constable's office, the police department, all the agencies out there are the resources of the sheriff's department, including the feds and state and everybody else. You know, it's like in DFPS, there's actually a law that says that that Department of Family Protective Services will work, they will work with law enforcement, law enforcement will work with them. And, you know, sometime you get pushback from law enforcement wanting to work with Department of Family Protective Services. No, the law says you will do that. And so if that's the case, we will be doing that. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. The other thing is, as a sheriff, how would you feel, how do you feel or you support staff taking vehicles outside the county line? To say forty miles where they live and coming back in patrol cars?
Well, I first have to ask you for what purpose they're doing that?
Go back home?
They, and we allow, we we're actually hiring people that live outside the county, correct? And we, they're, they have the assignment.
Hired them at that time they weren't living out there, then they moved? I don't know, I'll just ask if it's okay to take your car home beyond the county lines?
I don't, I don't see the problem, sir. But that's a, that's a multifaceted response that I have to give you to that because I'm not sure. Is I, I guess I would say to this that they would need to notify their supervision and and the supervision would have to acknowledge that one way or another and deal with it. Because if it, and there's another issue, too. Has it been done before? You know, why are, why did they move out there? And maybe, maybe they don't have permission to take home their car out. I don't know. I can't really answer that question one way because there's, there's other issues that may, you know, need to be discussed about that. I don't see a problem with it just off the top of my head. You know, you have to set some, maybe some, maybe some distance or something. And maybe you need to let employees know beforehand. As a matter of policy, we extend it to this line as far as response to the department. I know the city, we've done that. I wasn't part of that, of course, but the, the city had a, a distance, so to speak, that you must be able to respond within an hour. And you certainly should be able to respond forty miles, fifty miles out within an hour.
Say, for instance, if you came, you were appointed sheriff today, do you have anything in your mind right now that you visioned that your first thirty days, would, would, there's one change that you would make? Or one, one priority that you would look at real, real heavy at, you know, as to start your, your career as a sheriff?
One thing that I would look at immediately to change? No, sir, not immediately to change. One thing I want to do immediately is is start looking at every department, visiting every department, every division, talking to all the division heads, meeting the employees, but not to change immediately. I don't like to make judgments like that.
Good answer, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Larry. Good for, appreciate you being here today.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Couple of questions, just sometimes, like I said, when you're last, you know, you know, people ask you questions and that's absolutely fine because we're all wanting to get information. What I'd like to know is a little bit more about your philosophy in regards to running the jail. That that is the biggest albatross that that we have. And it's, it's difficult for the sheriff, it's difficult for us. So I'd just kind of like to know your philosophy on how you would run the jail, what you know about the jail, things you like, things you don't like, whatever you want to give me.
Well, I've only visited the jail through my entire, for nearly thirty-nine years in law enforcement, I've only visited the jail, either taking prisoners over there or transporting them out or whatever the case may be. I also spent some time because I was an intoxicilizer operator from since nineteen eighty-one to twenty thirteen. And so I spent usually anywhere from four to eight hours as intoxicilizer operator in moving about the jail. You know, the jail has caused many problems for New Haysis County and especially the Commissioner's Court. Sometimes embarrassment for the sheriffs in the past. I think we need to, you know, we spoke about Suicide Watch. I, I think we need to make sure that our, the people that we hire and position in the jail, that we meet certain qualifications with that and make sure they're highly trained, make sure that they're, they have a mindset that they want to be in the jail. You know, one of the problems, Commissioner Chestney, is that when you put people in certain positions, they don't want to be there, they revolt on you and they do crappy work. And they just barely get by. And then things mess up really bad and we're angry at them when we should actually be angry at ourselves. So I think motivating, critiquing, taking a look at our system, make sure it's safe, make sure we got the right people there, make sure they're supervised, make sure the supervisors want to be there. And making sure the jail is safe and we abide by the law, abide by the jail, the jail laws. Commission on Jail Safety. We need to abide by those things, make the people, make sure people are certified in the areas that they need to be certified on. You know, like I said, I don't know much about the jail, but I think the jail should be run pretty much like any other area of law enforcement. And if you do those things, as I just enumerated, I think we'll have success.
Thank you. One of the areas also that is is of huge importance to the Commissioner's Court and to the sheriff is the budget. And so I'd like to kind of get some more specifics on, you know, some of the stuff you've done with budgets or if you're familiar with this particular budget and just, again, whatever you'd like to offer on that, please.
Well, I know that you all set the budget for the, the sheriff's department. And no matter how much money you appropriate, the other side of it's always going to say it's not enough. And I always believe working within my constraints and you just have to make adjustments with it. But my experience in in budget is not at the top. My experience in budget is actually usually from units and divisions within the police department, within the state, not at the final end of it. I traveled to Austin once and talked about the, the state budget for the Special Investigations Division and CPS. And there's a lot to it because you're talking about thirty-five thousand employees or so. And that's a lot of people. And you can get as minute as paper clips or you can get as big as employee salaries. But there's a lot to be discussed, a lot to be learned there and you just take it step by step. But I also know that we have a county auditor and people that you can rely on. And you also have other administrators within the department that have experience at it where I have not. I have not been with the sheriff's department. I've never been a member of the sheriff's department. And it would be a, a learning curve for me to own the budget. And I'd have to work with you guys on that. And I have to work with the other administrators because I've not been a part of that. But I'm sure setting the budget and and departments and units is much like the state, is much like CCPD. And I have a, a working knowledge of that.
Thank you. One of the areas that I I've asked about and that you've talked about a little bit and that's also a big deal is is vacancies and retention. And that, that is concerning to to us and to me especially because the overtime that is related to those vacancies and that lack of retention is is both costly to the county, but also it's very difficult to provide a good quality of life for those people who really probably don't want to work all that overtime. Some of them probably enjoy it, but I'm sure a lot of them would rather be off on the weekends and be off on their days. So we, we get that part of the problem is always going to be how much you pay someone. We've, we've, we passed a very good contract last time. We're fixing to go into collective bargaining again. And I agree with you, I think that's a positive thing for law enforcement to have that. And setting that aside because that's our responsibility is to pay because you can't do anything about the pay because you, you get what you get. But what can you do about the vacancies, the retention and helping manage that overtime?
Well, there's a number of ways that you deal with employees as far as, you know, one, one thing is I learned through the years is that, you know, as you rise through the ranks, as you do the same jobs that other people have done, you kind of understand where they came from and what they're talking about. So you can, you can, and I hate to use the word dream up, but you can, you know, massage things to make it work. You know, you can motivate people because of your leadership, because you've been there. You're able to make adjustments because when you were back there doing that job, you also had these ideas that how things should be and how they can be changed. And, you know, one thing I've always said to myself is I don't, I don't claim to ever be a closed-minded person. I'm always looking, learning, listening, reading and absorbing from other people. And you can motivate by that because, you know, I've, I've worked with a lot of these guys in many different ways that are part of the sheriff's department. And retention usually has to do with, with leadership. It has to do with not listening. It has to do with unfair play or fair, lack of fairness or at least their perception of it. It may be a number of different things. But, you know, exit polls, exit questions for employees that are leaving, are thinking about leaving or whatever are very important. You know, CCPD started doing that just before I left, doing exit interviews. And I think that's very important because the private sector out there does that all the time. They do exit interviews. How do you learn where your mistakes are, where your shortcomings are? If you never ask anybody and you never act on them, you know, how do you learn? How do you ever grow? And, well, we're not just going to do it that way. Well, that's why we're failing. And, you know, in the state, we started doing the same thing. We do exit interviews. And that's important for retention. You may not be able to retain those people because they're out the door, but they're telling you what's going wrong and their perception of it anyway. And that's what you must act on. And you talk about wages. You know, I, I know you all have the purse strings and and it's up to, to the sheriff, his administration to show you the need. And, you know, but when you look across the great state of Texas and you compare your, your, your agency to like agencies, you need to be in the ballpark where they're at. You know, as far as wages, training, you know, number of people. There's several different things that you've got to look at. And we just, that's, that's, that's the way you retain people is is making sure they feel comfortable with leadership and and being accessed to you personally. That's another thing. I believe an open door policy is is a great way to go. But appointment, because you don't want everybody just walking into your door. But you want, you want to have a firsthand kind of relationship with your employees. That's what I had with mine in Houston. And it worked out beautifully. We, we just had, we had a very good relationship. We're very, we handle our case as well. We got the job done. And I believe that's the way it should work. I've had, I've had supervisors in my past that that did that, including a couple of chiefs. And they had great amount of respect when they had an open door policy and they really listened and and to what you had to say. when they had an open door policy and they really listened and to what you had to say. In some cases, they act on it. In some cases, they don't. But if you give an employee a reason why you can't do something and it sounds legitimate, they're on board with you. They're on board with you. And, you know, some people believe that you shouldn't meet with the union, you shouldn't meet with the employee organizations and so forth. No, I think that's wrong. I think that's your opportunity really to tell them what you're all about and where we need to go, you know, especially if you have their respect. And standing before them and you kind of put yourself on the spot, you know, when you stand before an employee group and discuss things with them. You know, you're up front and they can tell and they can throw things at you. And I believe that that's one of the ways that we retain people. And I think the attractiveness of being more competitive keeps them here along with good leadership.
Thank you. And you answered the question earlier about why you really want the job, but I'm going to ask it a little differently because I appreciate your answer, but I, your answer was really about the community kind of in making you, not making you, but really kind of getting you to do this. So, but why do you want to do it? I mean, why, why, I get all those people text you and they called you and, I mean, we've all had that happen and I just want to know why you want to do it.
Well, it's like this, Commissioner Chestney. You know, we, we take on different roles as we grow older and more seasoned in our life. And maybe the perception of myself isn't as great as the perception that others have of me. And so I listen to people. I say, I'm not a closed-minded person. And so if people say, well, hey, you know, why don't you do this? And I take a long look at myself and I say, well, I guess there's no reason why I shouldn't do that. You know, and so that's why I stand before you today. I feel very comfortable in being the next sheriff. Every task that I've taken on in my lifetime is as a law enforcement officer, you go in with the, you know, with careful steps and so that you don't make a mistake and later you become more comfortable. The next thing you know, you're, you're teaching it and you're bringing people into the unit, the division or whatever, and you're motivating, you're instructing, you're, you know, and there's all kinds of things you have, girding relationships with other departments and agencies and things just grow from that. And I think that's the role of a, of a good leader, this role of the sheriff, is to do those things and to also bring people in that do those things for the sheriff's department.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Larry, thank you. Thank you very much for your time and your patience today. And Tyner will get you back over in the room in a minute.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Larry.
Thank you all for having me here.
You bet. Thank you. Commissioners, the item four A two, we'll now open this up to any discussion that you might have about the appointment of the New Haysis County Sheriff. And we entertain, I entertain any comments or questions before we call for a vote. Anyone?
Judge, I make a motion that we, that we delay this decision. This is a lot of information to take at this moment. It's my motion. I will state, let me make, let me state it. We've had a lot of people here interested today. We have had a lot of information to digest for most on average between thirty and forty-five minute interviews. And I understand we can have discussion and I think that we should, but this is a lot to take in. I would not have a problem coming back next week in seventy-two hours as soon as we can post another meeting with another agenda. I think not having a closed session item to discuss this, you know, I don't have a problem discussing this and voting on this publicly. I'm the one that asked for this to be a public presentation. But to get to that point, it's going to be difficult. And so my motion is that we delay this for at least seventy-two hours until we can post another meeting. And then we can have time to digest this. I think allow the community to digest this information, to learn and maybe even meet these candidates and then to come back and have us vote on that. So that's my motion, Judge.
There's a motion.
Second.
Wave of motion.
Let me just have discussion. Laura, I thought when we posted the executive session public notice that that provided us to be able to go into executive session about anything on the agenda that we wanted to go into.
The practice has been that we actually specific, have a notice provision and we don't on this one.
Well, that's the practice, that's not the law. I mean, I'm just trying, I don't know what John's concerns are and I'm happy to go into executive session, but the law says if we've got it posted, and the way this reads, we can go into an executive session on anything on the agenda anytime we want to.
The practice has been, your practice has been that you post it specifically and go into closed session.
But that's not my question to you, with all due respect. I know what you're saying the practice is, but that's not what the law is, I don't believe, nor do I believe that that's what this reads. And that's why we, we put these comments, we put this executive session thing on here. Why else put it on there? Because there's nothing posted for executive session today. So why put it on there?
There was an AG opinion that basically required specificity. And as a result of that, this court took action and from then on, everything was done specifically. And that has been the practice. And if you go outside the practice and, I mean, you may be looking at someone's claiming that you're violating the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, I don't have to agree with that, but I know that's what the court's going to follow since that's the law. So, or since that's what our attorney's advising us. And ninety-nine percent of the time, I agree with our county attorney. I just, every once in a while, I don't. But I don't, yeah, nine-nine point five. So that's fine. And that's, anyway, I don't, I, I don't, I guess, John, I'd like to know more because why you're wanting to do this? Because this was how we laid this out? This was how we said we were going to do it? This is what we did? We did it basically by agreement that we would do this and that we would select someone after? So I'm trying to figure out why you're wanting to change and I'm asking that sincerely.
No, I think that this is a lot of information to take. I think based on the county attorney's opinion that she's giving us, based on Attorney General opinion. You know, there, I don't know how we're going to hash this out publicly, to be honest with you, in making a sensitive selection like this. You know, there, you know, all of us have been a part of hiring in this public setting. And so there's times that we need to go into executive session to discuss sensitive information, to be able to talk. I just, I would like to hear what the rest of the court's idea is of how do we get to our solution? I just think that, that there's one person that we're just going to throw out and if we have the votes, then it happens. I don't think that that's a fair process.
Well, I think.
To lay this out, and let me finish. I will, I think we need to lay this out as far as how we feel. Now, maybe we're going to do that. Maybe, maybe the majority of the court feels confident that they can lay out candidate X is, is the one, based on whatever information. But I think we really need to lay out how, how we are getting here. And I don't know if we can get to this. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have public discussion about this more, but I just think that not be able to go into an executive session and allow us a chance to really let this information sink in. This is a decision that we are making on behalf of the voters. I understand, we're elected to do this and that's why people elect us because based on our judgment and our experience to get here. So I understand that and I'm ready to do that. But this is, this is a vote for a very important position that's only coming down to five votes. And so, you know, I want to make sure that we get this process right. And I thought the process was there, that we'd be able to go into executive session and discuss this more. But because we can't, that really causes me to have some pause on this. And I think in the meantime, if this does pass, I'm, all I'm asking for is seventy-two hours because that's the minimum we have to be able to post a next meeting, is that we give us that minimum amount of time. I'm not asking to string it along. I know the court has already expressed, majority of the court has already expressed, that we want and must have this decision made immediately or as soon as possible. So I'm not asking to do that. I'm just asking to allow us to give us more time to, to look at this, to filter through this information. I think we asked a lot of good questions, but is there still more that we need to ask? Based on everyone, we were pretty equal in all the questions, but I just want to make sure that we have enough time and that we can do this in a frank discussion that we can have as a court. Now, if y'all feel that we can do this publicly and have this discussion publicly, then please make the argument for it and maybe I might change my mind. But for right now, I'm just concerned with that, with the attorney opinion that we have.
Judge.
Wait, just a minute. What is your motion? To delay or to go into executive session?
I never asked for an executive session.
But that's what you wanted.
Just to delay seventy-two hours.
That was not your motion. Your motion was to delay the selection process seventy-two hours. If you want to go into executive session and then come out and vote, that's a different motion.
I didn't ask that. I'm not, did I say that?
No.
No, I didn't say that, Judge.
Right. But oh, you wanted to delay.
I'm asking for seventy-two hours. Like I said, I'm not asking for beyond November first. We already discussed and debated that at the last meeting. So I'm not here to delay that at all. All I'm asking is the minimum requirement of law, which is seventy-two hours to legally post a meeting and to do that. Now, if that means it's not practical to do it over the weekend, then we can wait till Monday. Then, then, then we come back on Monday and then do it then. I don't think that there's any problem with now that the public has heard these responses, to be able to contact their elected officials, the five of us who are going to be deciding, and give us some feedback as well. And so that's what I think that this gives us a chance to do. We're not going to, we don't have that opportunity to be able to, to, to talk about this really, other than it seems like just to make a motion. I mean, that's, that's kind of what was said, Judge, you know.
No, we have a room full of people that are here.
You all asked for this to be done in open sessions. You all asked for the--
I asked for the interview, not for a--
No, 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 no. You all asked for this selection to be done in open session. You all asked for the interviews to be done in open session. I wanted to do all of this in executive session and then come out and then discuss our appointment. All we're doing right now is saying, we're doing exactly what this court asked for. You want all this out in the public? We got it out in the public. You wanted to vote in the public? Let's have a vote in the public. We've heard from every one of these people. We've done exactly what this court said they wanted to do. I'm not going to vote to delay this because there's no reason for us to go back and talk about things because this is what the court wanted. I heard you say the city did this. I heard you all say how great it was at the city that everybody got to hear this. I agree with that. Everybody got to hear it. We heard all these candidates. We know what their requirements are. We know what their qualifications are. You wanted to vote. I'm ready to vote. It's, let's, let's, we've heard everybody. If you all want to discuss this and what you think some of the strengths are of some of these candidates, that's fine with me. But you didn't want to do it in executive session. You wanted to do it in front of the public.
I thought we were going to do-- I myself thought we were going to do the interviews in public. I didn't think we were going to, when I saw it, I asked Christian, I said, we're supposed to do this right away? You know, and I remember we did vote, Judge, you know, that we're going to interview in open, which is great, open court. But I thought we were going to go back to executive session to discuss it a little bit more.
But John's not asking for executive session now because now he's, he doesn't even want to have an executive session, but I don't know how else we're going to hash it out.
I can't ask for executive session. That's not part of my motion. That's not what I'm asking.
We discussed this in the last meeting, just like the judge said. He tried to talk us out of it and we did not do it. We said this was how the process was going to be. There is nothing that's going to change my mind on who I'm going to vote for today after these interviews. We were elected to make a decision. So we could have twenty people on one side calling vice versa. It's not going to change. We have to make the decision. So I think that we need to go ahead and vote.
Okay. First of all, I'm going to go, here's my problem with this. My problem with this is this was exactly how the court laid this out. Now, I, with, hold on, hold on, hold on. And I'm going to go into that. With respect, I still don't agree, and I'd like to see that Attorney General's opinion, because I don't agree that we can't go into executive session today. Because this language on this public notice clearly says, clearly says we can go into executive session on anything that's on the agenda. I've been in other bodies where we've done that. And if that's a practice, that's fine, but I don't agree that that's the law. So if you want to go into, I don't want to, but if you need to go into executive session to talk about this, then I'll make that motion to go into executive session and I'm happy to go into--
I'm not going to go against what our attorney's telling us.
I get it. I'm willing to make that motion because we said we're going to do this today. We've told the public we're going to do this today. I've gotten all kinds of calls and emails from people telling me who they liked and who they didn't like. I've gotten a ton of public comment. We got a room full of people here that are, that I'm assuming a lot of them came to tell us things they want to talk about. So if you want public comment, let's let them all come in and do their public comment. So I agree, public input's important, but I don't think it's fair to stop this process when we told the world we were going to do this today. Now, I'm happy to make the motion to go into executive session. I don't want to. I don't need to. I'm happy to have any discussion I want to have out here. I'm happy to have all these people come tell me what they think. And I'll make a decision based on that. But if you feel like you need to go into some sort of executive session, I will support that motion for today. And I'm sorry, I don't agree that, that we're violating any law on this. And I'd like to see that Attorney General opinion and I'd like to know, you know, why then we bother to post this on the agenda if we can't go into, why even have it? If we can't go into executive session, why do we put it on our agenda?
We heard most of us say that we, we enjoy and expected to have a public input like this, which we have. The public's been involved and seen the questions we ask. I think all of us agree to that. Okay, so that's not the issue. The issue is what, executive session, isn't it? Because you're saying you'll make a motion. I'm not going to, I'm not going to walk into that room. You can go in by yourself. I'm not, if our attorney is telling us not to.
We have a motion on the floor and a second to delay this decision seventy-two hours. That's the motion and that's the second on the floor. It has nothing to do with the executive session. So the motion is--
Seventy-two hours so that we can then post it correctly, Judge. That's why.
Post what correctly?
That we can post this meeting correctly and have an executive session item.
Then you've amended your motion.
No, I mean, that's what I'm saying. That's what, I'm just clarifying that's the reasoning for the seventy-two hours.
It has--
That's your reason for delaying the decision today is so--
We can do it here if you want, but let's, just call the vote.
I want to do what the court said they wanted to do.
Well, let's just call the vote then, Judge.
No, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post no.
No.
Alright, the motion fails. Now, is there another motion?
Yeah, I'm, I don't understand the need to go into executive session. I don't have any desire. I'm happy to have all the discussion we have out here in public, anything and everything. But if it will make other members of this court feel better, I'll make a motion to go into executive session today because I believe the law provides us the opportunity.
I told you, I'm not going to go into executive--
Okay, well, I'm trying to figure out what you want to do in executive session, John, because--
Let's have discussion then. Let's have discussion.
We have a motion.
Alright.
Do we have a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Alright? We're now at the item two on the agenda, as prescribed by what the court wanted to do. Are there any questions, discussions, or comments that you would like to make about the candidates today before we call for a vote for the, to appoint a sheriff?
I'd like to, Judge, I'd like for there to be public comment and anybody here who wants to come make comments, to be able to do that because there are people here--
I want public comment. Anyone here like to make public comment? Public comment on the agenda item. We have an agenda item calling for us to appoint a sheriff. No public comment. See no public comment. Public comment. Well, you're public.
Come, come comment.
I'm commenting on your public.
I'm so, I'm using the city. Good afternoon, Honorable Court. And I was just listening. We have a fantastic candidate. You are just fantastic court. The question that you put that means so much for all of us. It's hard somebody to fill the shoes of, of our greater sheriff. But what I want to tell you, I am an immigrant, so I came here thirty-five years ago. And I respected all the laws of the United States to be where I am here today. So I just wanted to take in consideration that the law of the land has to be respected. I have a lot of respect for the police department, for the sheriff department, that they respect the laws. The governor gave a lot of funds for them to work with the, you know, immigration status of the citizens. So I want to take in consideration the candidate to really wanted to respect the law and keep us safe and help the people that come in this country to enjoy it, to fulfill their dreams, the dream of the immigrant like I am. So I am what I am today because I respected the law of the land and I would like for you to take in consideration that. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Public comment. We appreciate everyone being here. See no other public comment this time. Is there a motion on behalf of the court?
Could I make some comments, Judge?
Yes, I'm welcome anything.
I appreciate everyone that applied. I think we had some really good candidates and this is going to be some big shoes to fill. I have a lot of respect for and admiration for the sheriff, Kalen. I'm going to miss seeing him walk in here with that big ten-gallon hat. But for me, I was very impressed with one that stood out to me above the rest. And I, I think that he's got all the qualifications. He met, he met my standards of honesty and integrity. And he's got a jail and administration experience and I think we need that. And his answer, he'll enforce all the laws for the safety of our country, our city, our county. I liked his answers on policy, that you can be flexible because I don't think anything's ever black and white. He says public service is vocation. I admire that. That's a public servant. He saw the importance of working with other entities and I believe that's so important in this city. And one of the things that stood out, he sees the value of his employees. And I really like and respected that. I think he has a vision of the overall picture of what a sheriff is. He's a great public speaker, and I think he'll represent this court very well, this county. And I was impressed that his wife was here because this is a decision for a family, not just for one person. So I'm gonna make a motion to, um, for John Hooper to be the next one to fill this position.
Are there any other nominees?
Yes, Bud Mandel.
Pardon me?
Bud Mandel.
Alright, Mr. Mandel has been nominated. Any other nominees?
So Judge, we're gonna throw out all these names and then vote accordingly?
We'll vote till we find three votes.
So should we, I'm just asking for clarification from the judge or from our county attorney. So Commissioner Vaughn made a motion, so should we complete that motion first and have discussion based on him? Or should we?
Well, I think if, if, if Commissioner Vaughn will simply amend her motion to say she would like to nominate uh, Mr. Hooper for appointment, then we've.
I would like to nominate Mr. Hooper for appointment.
Thank you very much. We have Mr. Mandel who has been nominated. Any others?
Larry Young.
Mr. Young has been nominated. Alright, well, when, anyone else? Anyone else? Very good. What we'll do is we'll call the roll on the vote. We have three nominees, Mr. Mandel, Mr. Young, and Mr. Hooper. County judge votes for Mr. Hooper. Mr. Chastney?
Hooper.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Mandel.
Mr. Mandel. Mr. Moritz?
Young.
Mr. Young, Ms., uh, what the hell's your name?
Vaughn.
Been a long day.
Hooper.
Alright, Mr. Hooper has received three votes. Anyone else want care to make a comment? Any other comments? We have three votes for Mr. Hooper to be sheriff, to fill the entered, to fill the unexpired term of Sheriff Kalen. Thank you all very much. Mr. Hooper will be notified that he has been selected, and you all work out the details. Is that alright? I wanna thank everybody for being here. You've done a great job. We had three great candidates, and we're looking forward to working with Mr. Hooper. Thank you very much. I'll give about five minutes to clear the room, and then we'll move on to the agenda. I want to take number three before we go into executive session, please.
I'd like to table that, Judge.
Well, we're not.
I'd be able to, but I have to move the table.
Well.
The ventilation one?
No.
Number three to select the process?
I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry.
Wait, wait, are you saying which one are you saying?
Been a long day.
Number three.
The ventilation, AC one?
No, 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 I'm, I'm sorry, sir.
Number three is to set up the rules for the historic courthouse.
Oh.
That's what, that's what all that big paragraph is.
Yeah, the county courthouse, let's up the rules.
I got it wrong, I got it numbered wrong.
Okay. All we're doing with this vote is saying we're gonna do a seal bid. We're gonna do this and do that. That's what's, that's what all this says.
See what I read in here? That we're not, we're not appointing anybody, we're not doing.
We're not doing anything today except setting the policy so we can begin the process. That's all I wanna get behind us. Alright, here we go. Thank you. Alright, Laura, I want you to help us understand exactly what item number three is, please. Go ahead.
You have before you a court order, New West Coast County Court Order, and the, at the last meeting, the court had decide, made the decision to go into, um, to, to proceed under twenty-six, two sixty-three oh oh seven of the Texas Local Government Code, which means that it is bid out as for sealed, request for sealed proposals. And in this order, basically, that's what, um, what we're going to do here, or you're asking, uh, or you're gonna be approving, um, in essence, you're saying that we're going under that section, that it's on a competitive sealed proposal, that, um, that you're, you're ordering an evaluation committee, which is going to be made up of the purchasing agent, the director of the Office of Court Administration, the governmental affairs, uh, executive, the OCCA, and the county commissioner in the precinct where the county's property is located, which would be Commissioner Vaughn. You're ordering that notice be presented in accordance to this section, and, um, and you've made those findings, and that's it.
What's the timing? What, how much time are we allowing for this?
Once you, once you, um, make this order.
Alright.
We are working right now on the bid packet, and we're, we're gonna complete that bid packet pretty quickly. The appraisal has already been done. So we're gonna, as soon as that packet is available, then we're posting it on the, for publication. We're, we're gonna do it twice. One, and then, once, and then seven days after, fourteen days thereafter. So it's gonna be real fast.
So we're gonna be at least fourteen days before what?
You, you, uh, accept those, uh, proposals, and then there's, um, a process in terms of opening and, opening those proposals, and the committee will meet, and they'll handle it.
Alright, so you think you'll have the bid proposal packages ready by when, Elsa?
We have been working with outside counsel on that.
Alright, now, when, when is that?
And so hopefully, you know, we can, we've been working on it already, so we're, we're just waiting on the specs and the criteria so it can be.
Now, we got the appraisal, revised appraisal.
Right.
It was shocking, but we got the revised appraisal.
Um, we're hoping in the next two weeks, perhaps, we, we have them completed, and then, um, that can be our goal to, uh, to be able to.
We have a meeting on the thirty-first?
We have a meeting on October thirty-first and then November fourteenth.
And we have this process ready for this court to start evaluating this by the fourteenth of November?
No, because it has to be published. It has to be published twice, uh, so soon thereafter. So I'm, I'm thinking maybe a, possibly one month, when, right, one month? One month. And the committee would meet and bring back a recommendation.
One month from today, you're saying?
Okay, yep.
December fifth would be a very tight schedule. That's when I think we would be having.
When's the meeting at, or December the fifth?
The twelfth, and, and that's it for the, for the year.
And that's it? So we've got to get this done by the twelfth? Alright.
We can, we can move it.
Who, who is on the committee, who's being, purchasing agent, OCCA, precinct one commissioner, and who else?
And the, um, executive of the government affairs, which I guess is Tyner?
Let me see. Yes, government affairs is Tyner, uh, the director of the Office of County Administration. That would be.
Kristin?
Kristin, myself, and, and Commissioner Precinct Four.
So you have four?
Uh, precinct one.
Precinct one.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Vaughn.
You have four members listed for that.
Yes, sir.
Would it make, would it help the committee if there was five? I mean, I'm not jockeying for it. I'm just saying if there's another position that would be added that would assist. I don't know if it would be the judge or anyone else who.
The court can decide that. You can add one more.
You all would do, you wanna add a fifth person?
I would just, Judge, I would suggest if we could have an, I mean, I don't wanna complicate it by adding another person, but just for the sake of having an odd number, I think that would maybe help break any ties or any. But I, like I said, I don't have any.
And what does this committee do exactly? Sorry, my bad.
No, no.
We'd be evaluating the proposals received so that we can come back to the court with a recommendation.
John, I'm more than comfortable with you being that other person.
No, 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 no. I was gonna say the judge, or maybe Public Works, maybe?
I think it'd be good to have two commissioners. It wouldn't violate the Open Meetings Act, and we'd have.
I'm fine with John doing this.
I think that'd be great, unless you don't want to.
When you open your.
No, no, and I, I'm not trying to do that to you either, but.
Well, you're gonna be here a while, so you need to be, you two are gonna be here a while, so you need to be involved in this.
I mean, if you don't want to, then, but I, I don't.
I wouldn't mind doing it, and like I said, I wasn't jockeying for it, I was.
We'll add, we'll add, we'll add John as a second.
Well, we're jockeying for you.
Alright, let's, let's, let's please move this along in accordance with the regulations and laws as quickly. Now, remember, we're going down two paths. We're gonna be receiving sealed bids on reconstruction or rehabilitation.
Correct.
And we're receiving a sealed bid on buying it and tearing it down, subject to having the covenant removed.
However.
Okay, we got it?
That's what, that's why they're proposals, Judge.
Uh, well, I understand, I understand. So we have five people who are gonna make those recommendations, and the court is planning to make a decision on the fifth, twelfth of December. Twelfth of December.
Twelfth of December, okay.
Hallelujah.
Well.
December twelfth.
December twelfth, alright. Uh, I'll make that motion in accordance with what we just discussed if there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. Alright, I wanna take a break. We're gonna be gone for about fifteen minutes, and then we'll come back. We're gonna take about a fifteen-minute recess. Mic is off. Back into session at, uh, two thirty-five. Item number four. Uh, do you wanna discuss that at all, Brent, or what are we gonna do with that? Juan, come on up here, thank you. I asked Juan to really look into this. This is a, this is an octopus.
We're talking about, uh, the building in Port Rancis.
What, what I'd like to know, you know, what I'd like to know is, um, what do we need to do? Do we need to do, make a decision, Laura, like we did on the courthouse as to, um, if we're gonna seal bid it, or if we're gonna do whatever? I don't mean to cut off Juan, I wanna get into his too, but is that kinda what we need to do today too?
If, if you're ready to do that now.
I'm ready.
But, um, but there's some, some issues that have to be, um, looked at or addressed first before that gets done.
Okay, then I'll let you do your thing. Go ahead. I didn't know that.
How y'all doing? Per the request of Commissioners Court in the last meeting regarding this project, uh, we did hire Envirotest to do, uh, an asbestos test of, of the building to determine which areas, if any, if it did have any asbestos. Based on the findings from Envirotest, there are two, the west wing and the east wing.
Of course there are.
It has asbestos? It has?
Yes, sir, it does.
Great.
Uh, number four.
Thank you.
Or A if you want, yes.
This is just one, this is just one, for one copy.
Thank you.
I'm gonna keep one, and then I'll give one to you. If you look at items number four and number five, the floor, the floor and tile, tile, tile vinyl and the floor vinyl, were, were hot on the, on the asbestos. So what we did is we got an informal bid from a local contractor that removes asbestos, and the approximate informal bid was fifty-three hundred dollars to remove it.
Remove everything that's there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, and then do we, do we have an amount on the demo yet?
Yes, sir, it's twenty-one, twenty-one thousand two hundred.
I apologize, I was, got sick at that meeting, y'all talked about it, so I'm sorry. I appreciate y'all putting it off for me to be back, um, which is, which is a pretty minimal amount for that, to get that done. That's really not bad at all. Both is not bad, so, you know, I guess I gotta, we gotta figure out where to come up with the funds, though.
Timothy has some information on the insurance.
Okay, good. I was gonna say, we should have insurance on that building.
That's correct.
Yeah, there we go.
Judge, uh, going through with the insurance company, we did have a claim on there. A hundred and fifty-five thousand nine ninety-seven net to the county.
One fifty-five what?
Nine ninety-seven.
Okay, so, that being said, then we would use those proceeds to, to demo it. Okay, that's great. I don't know if you wanna do separate motions to do this, and then talk about how we're gonna put it on to sale or whatever, but however y'all wanna do it, I'm. Pardon me?
I, I think for now, you, you gotta make a decision as to whether or not you wanna sell it demolished, and that would include the removal of the asbestos, or to do it with both of them as is. So I mean, that's the decision that you have to make.
You know, if it weren't this inexpensive, I might just say to sell it as is, but it may be worth just, since we have insurance, I would think it's probably the better part of valor to clear it and give it a clean piece of property. I think it's a very valuable piece of property that will not have any problem selling. I mean, it's right on the main street of Port Rancis. Well, that's a little different than, it may, it may, it may be as much as valuable as the courthouse.
We selected the money at?
No, sir, it's, has been submitted for approval.
Alright.
So we have not collected anything yet.
So your motion is to pay for the asbestos removal and demolishing the building at a sum no greater than, how much, Juan?
It's twenty-one two hundred for demo, and then fifty-three hundred for removing asbestos.
Forty grand?
No, thirty, twenty.
Little over twenty-five.
Twenty-six, four.
Below thirty.
Yeah, twenty-six, four. Anyway, I, I, I would make that motion. I think that's the better part of valor, and can we, can we do that? Do we have to wait for the insurance proceeds?
No.
Can we move forward?
We move forward.
Okay, 'cause we gotta, I'm ready, let's.
Yeah, we'll loan, we'll loan you the money that pops in it.
Yeah, thanks, right, yeah. Golly, rough crowd. Okay, I would make the motion that we, uh, accept the bids to demolish and to remove the asbestos for twenty-one two and fifty-two hundred. Fifty-three.
On favor?
Aye.
Both same sign. And then the next time we come back.
Wait, can we, can we talk about the selling of it now?
I mean, you can talk about it, but the, the problem is, is that it's not ready until you demolish it.
No, I, right, I, well, yes and no. I, I mean, certainly if we, if we tell people we're going to demolish and, and so forth, I don't know that that would cause us any delay to put a sign on the building that says for sale. I, I'd like to just talk about how we do this. Yeah, and, and, right, we wouldn't sell it, we wouldn't close on it until it's demolished and torn down, but I just don't think it's gonna be a hard sell.
Agenda item authorizing the court to authorize the sale of the land, don't we? Alright, if we put that on the agenda for.
October thirty-first, we could do that. Do you wanna have an appraisal done?
Yeah, I do, and I've, I've sent Tyner some information on, on that.
Appraisal and all, and an agenda item on thirty-first to sell land.
Well, no, hold on, I, do we not, can we not do that with this posting? Can we not go ahead and put it on as a?
You can talk about it, but you don't take action, though.
Oh, it's just, just, even though we just took, we just did a motion on the demo, why can't we do a motion on this?
The, um, you can discuss the, the avenues that you could take, and then we can bring it back and actually take the formal action and, and get an appraisal done, order an appraisal. There's basically three, three ways to do it. You can either send it, um, do it by seal bid bids, by a real estate agent, or through public auction, so.
On this one, I, I, I think the better part of valor is sealed bid on this one because I'd like to see how high we can get this for, and I think we'll be able to get it pretty high. But if other people have different opinions, then that'd be fine.
I think you're right, but I still think we need a proper agenda item to do that.
Okay, you don't think we can?
We can bring it back.
Okay, so you don't think this posting does it? This agenda posting?
Just, you consider the action, this, this is not enough, I don't think.
Okay, so, okay, then we'll bring it back.
For the appraisal. We want an appraisal.
I don't know.
Thirty-first, we'll do what you want to do.
I guess you can decide if that's what you want to do, sealed bids and then we'll actually do it.
I, I would like to go ahead, if it's okay with the court, to get an appraisal and if I, now, because I think we, that'll save us some time on.
You bet.
Yeah, so, okay, so if we can at least do that, let's do that, and then.
We'll have it ready for thirty-first.
Okay, so will you put this back on the agenda with the wording Tyner? That's, that says we can like move forward and do this? Please, and, and again, okay.
Alright, Grant?
Hello, good afternoon, I'll be quick. I know y'all are ready to get out of here. We have a three-part agenda item, so that's why we put it on the regular agenda, just to kind of clarify what we're doing here. Back on April twenty-fifth of this year, we had applied for what was called the Operation Trail Boss Project and that was a project put together by the District Attorney's Office. And they originally wanted kind of a, an investigator and some secretarial help for interdiction. I know recently they hired some interdiction officers that are actually going out and doing some patrols. So originally they wanted an entire office, the application was for three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Some communications between their office and the Governor's Office kind of whittled that project down. It's, it's a great start, but they did not have enough funds available for that particular project, but they did have ten thousand dollars available for officer overtime under their local border security project. So the first thing we need to do in order for the District Attorney's Office to receive that grant is rescind the April twenty-fifth resolution, adopt a new resolution, because that resolution of April twenty-fifth references the Operation Trail Boss Project. That project has, title has now been changed to Local Border Security Program. So we need to rescind the resolution from April twenty-fifth, adopt a revised resolution referencing the project that has now been awarded for the Local Border Security Program and then we need to ratify the acceptance of the ten thousand dollar grant award. There is no cash match for that project.
There's a motion, is there a second?
There is, and a discussion kind of related enough to where I can not get in trouble with Laura. And I should probably know this, but, yeah, I did second you, yes. And, and so my question really is, is, and I should know this, I'm sure, do we have like a plan for, since Roxy's leaving? Do we have that posted or what do we do on that one? I know this is Grant's, and so I'm going to go ask that.
It was put on the unfreeze list, that position was put on the unfreeze list.
HR can immediately start recruiting and, and fill the position.
Didn't see that, that was on this one's agenda?
It was, yes.
My bad, I missed it, okay, thank you, sorry.
I have a question.
Is there something in the water?
I think it's too much water, too much water.
Yeah, I'm floating away over here. Golly.
Did we vote on this?
Judge, I have a question.
Not yet, not yet.
Okay, so he has one criminal investigator, is that what he has?
I think they have two interdiction, the two criminal investigators that they use for interdiction. I know there's Mike Thumiz and I believe he has another employee, I'm not too sure.
So is this ten thousand dollars for two or overtime?
It's for overtime, it's strictly for overtime, no personnel.
Is this normal, this, that it costs as much for overtime, I do not know.
Um, it's for a year, so we've done it before, we've done this project before with the Constable's Office. The Sheriff's Office has received this grant in the past. They weren't interested this past year because it does require a lot of paperwork. It requires a lot of reporting, they have to do daily summaries, they have to report to what's called, I think it's the Joint Operations Intelligence Center in Victoria, on all of their activities on a daily basis. And they have to fax, I think those fax or email to that entity and then they're reporting to the state. So yeah, it's, it's paperwork intensive and that's why not a whole lot of people are interested in this program. But it is beneficial because this program comes available every year through the Governor's Office. So if the District Attorney's Office, you know, feels it's beneficial, they can apply every year and are pretty much guaranteed to get an award every year.
The same money that the Constables get too or no?
Constable Precinct Five was the last entity to get this grant and it wasn't this past grant year, it was the year before. But again, it was paperwork intensive and I know they were undergoing some personnel changes, so they didn't choose to reapply.
So this is, this is just a, there's no match and it's?
There's no match, it's just for overtime, yeah.
Have I voted?
No.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, and a second.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye, both same sign, thank you. Okay.
Okay, first item for purchasing is the award for the I.B. McGee Park Phase One Lift Station Reconstruction. We received one bid. The recommendation is to reject all bids. The bid came in forty-five percent higher than the estimated cost. And then, the, the thought is that this would be bundled into a different bid for a much bigger project and so I will not be asking to rebid the specific item individually, just to reject all bids.
That is correct. This will be bundled into my CO project that I've been waiting for, for the rest of my life to happen and hopefully won't be waiting for, for the rest of my life. But anyway, that'll be bundled in and we hope that that will then provide a better bid and a, and more bidders.
Okay.
So I would move, move to reject the bid.
I have a second. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, thank you.
Second item is the award for the mowing services out, out at the Nueces County Airport. The, this contract is to mow three different zones out at the airport. The cost for each individual zone is noted in the bid tab. The recommendation is to award to Jack and Jill of Many Trades for the services. The services are requested through the airport manager as needed. Normally it's three times to four times a year, sometimes more depending on the rain.
So what's your recommendation?
To award to Jack and Jill of Many Trades.
Alright.
So how often do you say they'd mow it?
It depends on the rain Commissioner. Usually it's once every season. The, the grass stays pretty low out there, the heat sometimes just kills the grass off. So they don't need to be mowed and so.
Grass grows in the summertime, so y'all aren't concerned about that they would have to be mowed more than that? Will they mow it every time, if it's five times in the summer?
If it's needed, the, the airport manager makes the call.
Okay, he determines if it's.
Yes, sir, yes ma'am, sorry, yes ma'am.
Making sure it wasn't them.
So where, where is this money coming from, where is this?
It, it comes from the airport fund, Department one sixty.
It's already there?
Yes.
Need a motion?
All moved.
Second.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Auditor?
Yes, sir, last Commissioners Court, the Tax Assessor Collector provides y'all with the certification of the tax levies for the county, for the Farnum Market Road and as well as Hospital District. I am required to verify those balances and determine if there was any difference between what was on that roll and what was used for our July twenty-fifth certification that we use for the budget. I have, went over the balances and has certified the numbers. However, the balances did come in a little bit less than what was on the twenty-fifth certification roll because of most of the ARBs settled a little bit less than what it were, but it's not a significant amount. The general fund shows about a seventy-four thousand dollar difference between what we use for the budget and what was provided by the Tax Assessor Collector. Farnum Market Road was about a little over a thousand dollars. Hospital District came in a little bit better because of some different ways of evaluations of its property, they're at eighteen thousand four fourteen. So the net difference between what the levy was on the twenty-fifth and what the levy was what provided by the Tax Assessor for October the first was a negative fifty-seven thousand and therefore I verified the certification of the tax levy.
Questions to the auditor? Any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion. Thank you, is there a second? All in favor? Aye, both same sign.
Next item, Ms. Bud, change order number twenty-five and our capital project change order number seventy-two. Our change order number twenty-five only covers two departments, that being the District Attorney and the Sheriff's Office. The District Attorney's Office, the biggest one, is for professional services where most of their lab work is founded for and this toward the end of the year, they, they, that's where they get a little strain on their budget. The sheriff needs a little bit more repairs for some of his vehicles and therefore I submit those two items for your approval. For our project change order, I've worked with Commissioner Vaughn, Commissioner Jag, as well as Edward on a, a building out at the four yard for the road fund. They saw how damaged the building was. I worked with Christian and my staff to try to find some funds in the capital project funds that we could use for, for these funds. And I was able to find a majority of the funds, however Commissioner Vaughn, Commissioner Jag, I was offered to make sure we had the entire funds needed. Unfortunately Edward's not here, but Mr. Penmetel did provide the quote for the billing at the location. I believe it's a, the three hundred thirteen thousand dollars is justified and I submit both these for your approval.
You two Commissioners, okay with this?
I have a question.
Alright.
How much funds were found?
We found up to almost, we had two hundred and forty, fifty thousand dollars, so you, you and the Commissioner are putting in thirty-seven thousand apiece.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I want to ask about this. This office, if you've not been out there to visit it, I cannot believe what it looked like and how those employees were working there. But this office serves, does it serve everybody, Juan?
No, there's two of our supervisors here, one of our administrative assistants is there.
Give him the mic please Juan.
It's one of three.
A total between two, between maybe three, four people. And then we also, they also hold meetings there once in a while.
But it's public works, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the yards there and they distribute it to different, they work out of that yard to all the areas, correct?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay, with knowing that it goes for all the areas, you, you other two don't want to help contribute to this to get this office for our employees together?
No, wait a minute, I've contributed a lot, I don't remember everybody contributing when I asked about contributions. That's not my precinct, if it's in my precinct.
It's not my precinct either, but it's a travesty that they have worked out this office.
Well, why do we have to have that office?
Commissioner, the, when I, oh, sorry. Sorry, when I, when I got here, I went and looked at that office and that building, well really it's.
We went to look at it.
Yeah, we went to go look at it and, you know, there's holes in, on the floor.
Why do we need the building is what I'm saying.
That's where, that's where the office is out of.
Oh, no, but before we put good money after bad, why do we, why don't we move those people somewhere else and get them out of that office and tear it down too? I'm just asking.
We're not ready to move all that.
Yes, sir, we, we need somebody there, office-wise, that's staffed there to, to be able to, to, to kind of keep, that, that's where the administrative person is there and then the other two supervisors, because that's where they haul off all the material and they have other equipment there that they use with, for the, for the surrounding perimeter.
Well, couldn't you put a temporary building there? I mean, I'm being serious, I mean, why would you want to spend sixty thousand dollars on a building that it sounds like needs to go away?
Yes, sir, if you put.
Well, okay, let's be more practical.
Yeah, I mean, I would recommend, and this is what I had recommended, is to put a, to put a, not a temporary building, but to put a, a building that is structurally sound, that is windstorm certified. So that way if anything happens, the building was still there.
Okay, how much is that?
If you put a temporary building, right now, we put it, we put a cost system, or I put a cost system in about three hundred and thirty thousand, which includes some engineering fees in there.
Good lord, no, wait a minute.
Yes, sir, but that's, that's, and then that's, that's because there's, it's a breakdown of the cost and I can give you a copy of the cost, of the opinion of cost. There's, there's, there's other items in there. Right now what they're using is they're using the existing septic system, which is probably a no septic system. The plan is to connect it to, with a mini lift station to tie into the city to have, to have a, so that way you don't have to be pumping out the, the septic system. So there is costs in there for that. There's other costs in there that it's included, if you want to, I can give you a copy of it.
No, I, I'm just curious as to, okay, so.
Are you talking about putting a temporary, like a trailer there?
Yeah, I mean, I don't understand why we couldn't just put something there. In other words, is that the spot we want to keep forever and ever amen? Or can we move these people around? No, I'm asking, you're the guy. Can we move these somewhere else?
I would keep them there, my, my recommendation is to, to keep them there because that way you have a, you have the central, central yard, you have your four yard and then you have your rockstone yard. I would recommend that we do, that we do build a, a permanent structure so that way they have a permanent structure versus, my deal is when you have a mobile office is you're always going to have issues with it. You know, you have critters and stuff that start eating underneath from the, from the mobile office, so you'll start getting all that, starting getting, it'll start getting deteriorated when you can have a permanent office and then that way it's there for.
Well, yeah, a permanent office is three hundred and thirty thousand dollars and a temporary office is thirty thousand dollars. So what, I'm, how much do we need this three hundred and thirty? I mean, if that's where we're going, then I, I'm going to go look at this building because I don't understand why we need this.
Can we do this because you guys need to look at the building? I think you should because the way I got involved is they thought it was in my precinct, but it's not. But I don't want those employees to have to work under those conditions.
Totally agree.
So I would like to take this off and let you guys go look at it and come back and let's do an evaluation together. What do you think Jag, it's your, it's your precinct.
Yeah, but I don't know, I want to hold, I mean, we can do that, but I still don't want to hold off on to it because I think, even though my, my long plan, Commissioner, is to try to maybe do one big yard.
Okay.
You know, but it's not going, it's not going to be overnight.
No, no, I hear you, so, but, so maybe a temporary might be better.
And I think that, I've worked with Juan, I think, I think even, we just need to get approved because we might, the monies we spend might not even be half of that.
But we don't know that, and so if I'm going to.
Well, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure they're not going to be.
I'd like for the others to help too.
Okay, so let me ask you though Joe, and what I'm trying to figure out is, if your long-term plan, I get it, if your long-term plan is to have one big yard, which makes sense to me, then what, what, why would it be a bad thing to just put a temporary building there for now and not use that building anymore and give you time to do your long-term deal? But I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think, I want, I don't want anybody of us, any of us to throw good money after bad if we're going to, so would it, why wouldn't a temporary building work? It's got to be better than that they're working in now.
It is, it will be a lot.
And if at the end of the day you want to go with one yard, I mean, I think you could go get a temporary building for, what, twenty thousand dollars? Twenty-five thousand dollars?
I already need to research it, Commissioner.
Juan, can we look at?
I want to get those employees in. For what? Oh, but you're still wanting to put a building there?
Yeah, but it'd be like one of those, one of them buildings, you know that.
Okay, well, I would be more inclined, if, if you're asking for donations, I would be more inclined to donate to something that is not fixing up this crummy building that we think we're going to eventually knock down, but that's what we're.
No, we're not, we're not fixing the existing building, that building is going to get torn down.
No, no, but what are you doing, what are we doing with the sixty thousand? Or this thirty thousand each you just said y'all were spending?
That's the difference between the three thirteen and the two fifty that Dale found and to, to be able to use. We're going to have to come up with the rest of it.
So, okay, so you're going to put in a permanent building for this three thirteen, right? Is that what we're saying? It's the water, so we're going to put a three thirteen into this building where we may not even want it someday? No, no, I'm saying, but if we, but we may not even want this someday? No, 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 I'm not trying to be belligerent, I'm really not, I'm trying to figure out if there's a better way to do it.
And Commissioner, this might be, the, the cost that I did is usually a little bit on the high side. That way if we come to court, it's not going to be, you know, you do have a little bit of contingency in there, I want to say. But it might be a little bit less, right?
I mean, it's, it's certainly your precinct and if you've got the money to. I know, I, I'm trying to, ah.
Somebody make a motion.
Motion and bring it back in the next meeting after Juan has researched the cost of temporary structure.
But get those employees out of there, I mean, we can put them somewhere else for a couple of weeks. I mean, I didn't know this was going on, it was kind of like that JP office that John and I worked on. I mean, that thing was a, it was a pit and now we're moving them into a, I mean, we're not. We're not, and, and we're not, and we're not, if we don't know about these things, right, and we can't help them, but we want to help them, so get them out of there and let them work somewhere else. Put them, put them in Commissioner Vaughn's office.
What are we going to do? You're going, we're going, we're going to delay this, so at the end of the day, what are we going to do? You going to bring something back for?
Yes, sir, I'll bring, yes, sir, I'll bring, I'll bring a, a cost for a, a temporary building and then we'll visit with both Commissioners so we can go out there and take a look at it.
Alright, you guys, you guys take a lead on this and let's get it done one way or the other.
I think, but we need to make our mind next meeting though.
Alright, so the motion is to table till when?
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, that's your motion?
Yes, sir.
With instructions to bring back some alternatives.
Yes, sir.
That's the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, thank you Juan.
Can part of that motion be though to get those employees out of there temporarily while we're working on this? Does that work? I don't want them in there. What's that?
We're looking to it.
Okay, alright.
Alright.
The last item, Your Honor, was our, our pay schedule with the two percent cost of living increase. Our pay schedule, which we've had for several years, needs to be revised to include the two percent cost of living adjustment so that HR can have something to use for their, their funds.
So move, second. This is a uniform pay schedule. That's right, and that's what we're doing. We have a motion, a second, to approve the uniform effective pay schedule effective October one, twenty eighteen, which includes a two percent cost of living increase, all in favor, signature five, same aye. Aye, both same sign, thank you Dale, there's a lot of work in that folks, a lot of work in that. Commissioners Court may go into executive session at any time on items posted on the agenda. Under number five A, we will now go into executive session under Vernon's Texas Codes, Sections five-five-one-oh-seven, one-oh-seven, two-oh-seven, three-oh-seven, four-oh-seven, four-five-oh-seven, six-oh-eight-six and one-oh, and oh-eight-seven, executive session starts at, I mean, it's after three. Back into regular session at quarter to four. I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the county attorney to.
File a motion for.
File a motion to.
For rehearing.
File a motion for a rehearing on the.
Supreme Court case.
Supreme Court case.
In Ray Occidental Chemical Corporation.
That's it. That's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, both same sign, okay. Here we go Tyner.
First thing you have is Nueces County Emergency Services District number two. Wes Basetas resigned and you have applications from Tammy Bolton and Charles Spivey.
Judge, I'd like to nominate Bolton, please, Ms. Bolton.
You have one Oakman?
That's correct.
Okay, Bolton has been nominated, any others? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nueces County Hospital District's next, this morning Debbie Lindsey Opal withdrew her application. You have John Valls and Ted Daniel.
Move to reappoint.
Move to reappoint. Move to reappoint.
Okay, what do we, what do we move to reappoint what?
Ted and John.
John Valls and Ted Daniel.
Can we, can we vote on those separate?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that if you want to. Make a motion.
Make a motion to reappoint Ted Mandell, or whatever his name is.
Daniel.
Sorry.
Ted Daniel.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, both same side. All right, I need another motion. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to reappoint John Valls. Any others?
I'd like to make a statement. I am very disappointed in how this was handled previously, and I want this to go on record, because I'm going to make a motion as well. I don't have anything against John Valls, but I think that he definitely has a perceived conflict of interest and a conflict of interest. His wife works for Physicians of Swan. He goes to all the events. He has access to all the people at Swan. And whether this court thinks it's a conflict or not, in my mind, ethically, I think it is, and it's certainly a perceived one. And so I'm making a motion that he be removed from that, that his name be taken off, and that we open it up for more people to put their applications in. I know that my motion's not going anywhere, but I want it stated in the minutes.
All right, we have a motion and a second to reappoint John Valls.
Right, and I want to discuss, too, if I can.
All right, go ahead.
Since I was caught off guard by the fact that Debbie Lindsey Opal came today and spoke about an agenda item at public comment, which was improper, and she'd stayed when she was supposed to stay, which would have been now, I could have responded to that, so I'm going to take that opportunity to do it now, even though I couldn't do it in public comment this morning. I want to say that I appreciate the fact that Ted Daniel and John Valls both reached out to me and both asked me to meet. I'm always willing to meet with anyone who wants to meet. Debbie Lindsey Opal never reached out to me, and quite frankly, sometimes, unfortunately, we don't have time to to meet with every board member and every board appointment. I didn't meet with Ms. Bolton. I didn't meet with Mr. Spivey. I didn't meet with a lot of these folks, and unfortunately, maybe we should do more of that. But at the same time, I do want to say that I appreciate Mr. Valls and Mr. Daniel reaching out. Had Miss Lindsey Opal done the same thing, I would have been happy to have met with her and discussed things with her. And quite frankly, I think she would have been a good choice, and I think it's unfortunate that she came forward and decided that she needed to throw me under the bus for the mere reason that she won, didn't want to resign from the City Council, which she would have had to do, and two, has conflicting business interests that is the real reason she's saying she can't do this. So I don't, I don't particularly like, and I've had a very detailed conversation with John Valls about this. I have concerns about those things that Ms. Vaughn has articulated. However, at the same time, I have had those conversations with him, and I've reviewed the legal opinion that the county attorney has provided, and I don't disagree with this one. Like I said, 99.5% of the time, I agree, and I don't mean to be disrespectful when I disagree. If I was earlier, then I certainly apologize. And I, so I don't. So I don't think it is room for disqualification, and I don't think that that is what is necessary. And I think, quite honestly, John's done a nice job on that board. He's raised some issues and some questions that maybe some others haven't. So I don't, I too, or I don't have a problem with John, and I don't think it's necessary to move forward in any other way but to reappoint him. So I will, I will vote to reappoint him.
One of the reasons that Debbie was going to be disqualified is because she was an elected official, and that she did not want to resign. That was where you had your problem, Laura, because she was running for office, and we clarified that. Well, what y'all didn't state, and all of you knew up here, was that John Valls is running for the London School Board, which is an elected office. So whenever he gets that, say he were to get it, is he going to have to resign from the hospital board? But you all knew that, and so to me, the problem is here. It's unfair, because, Brent, you brought that in at the 11th hour with Debbie, and I understand why she's frustrated.
I didn't bring that in, Carolyn.
You asked for her opinion, but it was at the 11th hour. We got it right during the meeting, and you changed the conversation at the beginning of the meeting, when it was an agenda item at the end.
And Carolyn, you know what I said to her? Here's what, here's what I, here's what I'm offended by. I'm offended by every time you don't like what we do, you say it's a good old boy club like you did in this appointment. And you can say whatever you want, but that's exactly what Debbie stood up here and said. And you go look at the track record of this court and me and who we appoint, and this isn't a good old boy thing. We don't have a lot of women applicants a lot of times. So you don't know how I was going to vote for Debbie Lindsey Opal, and neither does she. But I raised the question on John Valls, and I, did I raise the question on Debbie? I might have. I don't remember who asked for that one. Did I? Can you remember? No? You don't know, Carolyn. You only know because I said I think I did. No, Carolyn, you don't know. I'm saying, if I did, then I did it on both of them, because if I'm going to raise the issue on John Valls, then I should certainly raise an issue on Debbie. And I'm not sure I'm the one who asked for that, but did I ask for that? I don't remember. I don't think I did. Well, thanks, since you accused me, and you're so sure that I did it, Carolyn.
I don't, I don't recall how it came down, but I do know that I was made aware of it, and then I had to address it.
I think I said that we need to get attorney's opinion.
Yeah, so before you accuse me of things you think you know of, then that's not right. I will own it. If I did it, I would have told you I did it. I did it on John Valls. I asked for that legal opinion on John Valls. That was my request. I don't remember asking on Debbie Lindsey Opal. If I did, I'm asking Laura to tell me, and I want the world to know, because I don't think I did, but you've accused me of it, so I want to know. If I did it, then I will own it, so please go back and look.
I think you had a discussion. I'm the one that brought it up. But also, I asked for an opinion on the appraisal district.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I don't know if I did. I swear to you, I don't remember doing it. I think it was Joe, but I'm not sure that that's right either.
I'm offended that, you know, I look at the boards that we've got. It's all men that put their applications in, because like Debbie said today, they don't expect to get it. They don't expect to get it.
Carolyn, I just appointed, I just appointed a woman to the ESD because she was the most qualified person amongst the two applicants. So I just did that. So that's not fair to continue, but you do. You say we all do this, and I'm not, that's not right.
And I see it here, too, and I'm not going to back off on that. I do see it. Women get appointed to, like, animal control and libraries, but real important...
Barbara Canales is our Port Commissioner, Carolyn. Sylvia Tryon is our Nuasis County Hospital District representative.
I mean, the hospital district, good for you. There's nine people on there. There's one woman. And I just think that we need to set an example for the city. If the city's not going to do it, we need to set an example.
How many appointments do...
You had a female private sheriff today. Come yell him over.
Yeah. How many appointments did we have, how many appointments do we have on the hospital district board? How many do we have?
I'll have to look that up.
We don't appoint the...
Dallas County.
Okay, so, right, so whoever we have appointed, then go back and look how many female applicants we had at the time of those appointments. Because it's easy to say, we don't do something, when you don't go back and look and say, let's look at the track record of what we've done, and let's look at the number of applications we have when we had it. So if there's no female applicants on something, then I don't know how to appoint a female applicant.
I'm not going to argue with y'all.
But you are.
I'm not going to argue with you, because it's not going to go anywhere. But I would just say this, a situation that has the potential to undermine the impartiality of a person because of the possibility of a clash between the person's self-interest and professional interest of public interest is a conflict of interest. He definitely has a conflict of interest, and if you guys want to overlook it, he's also on the top B board. He is appraisal district. He is the chairman, and now, now we want to put him on another taxing entity, and I think it's wrong. And even Greg Smith resigned, because he was on the appraisal district when he was elected, because he served a year, and he, it was because of the appearance, and he resigned.
Oh, and we appointed Gabby Hillpole to replace him, by the way, just so you know. We replaced a woman to that board to replace him, just so you know. To the Nuasis County Appraisal District, which is a huge appointment. Gabby Hillpole is a woman. Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
This has nothing to do with John Valls. It has the fact that we need to spread this around. We should not give power to one person for all of these different boards. And some on the hospital district board think there is a conflict, and I think there's a conflict. But if you guys can't see it, that's fine, but my motion, I'm just going to make a motion that his name be disqualified because he has a conflict and the perception of a conflict, and I fully expect it to fail, like I said, but I want it on the record that I made the motion.
But right now, we have a motion and a second to reappoint John Valls. And that's the motion on the floor, unless somebody rescinds that motion and we start over. So the only motion that we have that we can vote on is the one we have that says we want to reappoint John Valls. And that's a motion and a second. I'm going to call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, ayes have it. Congratulations. All right.
Next, Judge, you have Nuasis County Animal Control Advisory Committee. Tom Watson has expressed interest in being reappointed. We recommend reappointing Tom Watson.
So move. Second. All in favor? No? Okay, did I get three ayes?
On Tom Watson?
Yeah, yeah. Aye.
Do you have any other applicants?
We've already had two. We've reappointed. This is the third appointment.
Yes, and there's no, we had two appointments that were incumbents that we did, was it last court?
Yes.
And then, there is no maximum. Tom Watson expressed interest. He'd been on the board in the past.
29 years.
29 years, and I think he indicated to the judge that he wanted to be reappointed.
He hasn't done very much over there in those years.
Okay.
Judge, I mean, just, you know, as we're giving comments, you know, I think the bigger concern that we should, when we're looking at these boards, is how long some of these board members are on, and I think that that's the main issue. I think that would give us a chance for more opportunity, for more turnover. I know we've discussed this plenty of times. There are some boards that are by statute that we can't, but I think the boards that we can, that are under our control, not by statute, that we should try to visit a policy soon, that we set up some sort of policy for the court, that, you know, we give a person, you know, three terms, two or three terms. I mean, you see that at the city, I don't see there being any reason why not to do that in the county as well, because I think that that's what discourages people from applying or getting an opportunity is that.
Commissioner, all the boards are, have term limits. All the big ones, there are term limits except for the hospital district. And you guys are there with 13, 18 years, but, but all the other small boards, I mean, it's hard to find people sometimes from your precinct, because you've got to get somebody from your precinct, and it's hard to fill them, because there don't, nobody wants to apply. But most of the big boards are term limit boards now, so they only serve three terms, and that's it.
And it's really, I mean, like the BMAC board, I have to beg people to apply for that. Of which, by the way, the last three appointments that I found, went and found, were women, so that you know. But I can't find people to serve on some of these boards. If you can, and they're men or women, or whatever you want, please bring them, because we can't find, I mean, we can't find people to serve on some of these boards. I mean, we can't. And I mean, when we appoint some of the big board, like today, no offense, but with Debbie pulling out, we only had two applicants for the board. I don't know what to do. I try to call people and get them to be involved, and they won't. I, I, I am open for suggestion.
Did I vote on, get a vote on Tom Watson?
I'm not sure if you got three.
Did I get three?
I voted yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
No.
Okay.
It was 4-1.
4-1. All right, thank you all for that. You through? Okay. I don't have anyone to adjourn in name of today. Brent, do you have anybody?
Yes, sir. Judge, Maritza Tunches passed away. She's the mother of one of the city council candidates for District 3, Eric Tunches. Herman Allen Pollard, formerly of Robstown. He lived in Bandera. He passed away just last week. And Roland Guyona, who many knew as community activist here in Corpus Christi, just recognized and remembered of him.
All right, anyone else? Joe?
I do, yes, sir.
Please.
Did you have some? No, I do, yes. I wanted to add my condolences to Roland Guyona and his family. Roland was really one of a kind, you know, just really a neat guy and very involved in the community and, yeah, just had a rough go there, and so condolences to his family. To Louis Spin, S-P-I-N-N. Louis is the husband of Gail Spin. He was from, they lived in Port Aransas. Louis passed away recently. My condolences to his family, to the family of Edith Sap, otherwise known as Edie Sap. Lloyd, you probably remember, the Durham family, and she was the daughter of the Durhams, and she passed away after, I believe it was a heart issue. John Edward Lyne, L-Y-N-E. He lived here in Corpus Christi and also was very involved in the George West community, and passed away, unfortunately, at a very young age, younger than me, and had a heart attack here recently. And condolences to his family. They're very good friends of our family, and certainly, yeah, I'm not sure about all that. But anyway, anyway, condolences to those people.
Carolyn, anyway, I want to add just one. This, last past Monday, we, our family gathered in Houston. Our son's wife's father passed away in the hospital. He went in for routine surgery, and unfortunately, he never came out. Tom Johnson was a fine man. He was a Christian man. He was a great-grandfather, and he will be sorely missed by their family. He was a good man. Let's stand for a moment. Okay, mic's off.